I'd like to call to order the Common Council meeting for October 22, 2024 at 6:06 PM. Attendance roll call.
Other persons, Wolf?
Here.
Hamel?
Here.
Decker?
Here.
Schwer?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Kabaki?
Here.
Madden?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, October 18, 2024.
Thank you. Public com-- let me say something. Oh, sorry. Public comment? Any city residents or taxpayers that would like to speak on an agenda item? This is not the public hearing which will be following communications from the mayor's office. Anyone? All right. Moving on to communications from the mayor's office. Couple things. Early absentee in-person voting?
In-person absentee.
Yeah. Early voting started today. I want to thank our clerk, Carrie and her staff. We had almost 1,000 voters come through today. That is unheard of for early voting in any one day, especially the first day. And any hiccups we did have were not a result of them. It was, you know, some people, a couple people that, you know, just didn't like the lines, and I understand it. They were long lines, but they did a really good job of moving it through. There were some technology delays because the state, this was not just here in Muskego, this was hitting everywhere around the state. And so everyone, every clerk's office around the state was hitting the state servers at the same time. So it got to the point where they couldn't even print out labels for the ballots. They had to do them by hand. So they did a really good job of keeping up. So and they're still, and they're still working on that now, I believe. There's a number of people over there. So I just wanted to say thank you and.
Awesome job. Yeah, I did hear on the radio that there was lines for, waits for parking, and my parents concurred. They went to vote today and couldn't get into park.
Well, I have to say that I was here and it went fine. I mean, I stood in line a half hour. People that were leaving before me said they were there about 45 minutes, but it was easy. It was, it was a good process and it went through nice. So.
Thank you. Moving on, announcement of, so the reason we have multiple elected officials within our community is to share viewpoints, ideas, and engage in respectful discussion and debates on the issues we face. The goal is to ultimately arrive at decisions that are best, that best serve the interests of those we represent. The one key word in this process is respectfully. In recent months, our meetings have lacked some structure, order, and at times respect, the respect necessary to produce dialogue, not only for our fellow council members, but for our staff and public as well. I, as chairman, take responsibility for this. Starting tonight, we will be following Robert's Rules of Order to restore decorum and ensure that our meetings are productive and respectful. So just to go over some ground rules on that, you may only speak when recognized. All comments should be directed to the chair, not to individual council members or people in the audience, unless we're specifically, like we're going through the budget and you're asking questions of staff members, that's fine. Once recognized and given the opportunity to speak, you will not be recognized again until the other members have had a chance to contribute, and then we'll circle back again. So we're just trying to, just trying to keep this orderly and respectful and keep dialogue going. So I apologize for letting some of these meetings get little free following and hard to follow. So I'm hoping this will help. It's my sincere goal that we conduct civil and orderly discussion that leads to the best decisions for our constituents. Let's all work together to achieve that. And that ends my communications from the mayor's report, mayor's thing. Public hearing. A public hearing to hear any citizen on the proposed 2025 budget. And Jenny's going to give the presentation on that.
I am. For anyone in the audience, there are printouts of the presentation on the back table there if you'd like one. This evening, we'll provide a budget overview for the city's operations, which include the general debt service, special revenue, and capital project funds. As noted within the mayor's proposed budget, levy limits and inflationary issues have made producing a balanced budget an extremely difficult process and required a coordinated effort with staff to propose adjustments within their departments. As noted in the prior year, other options and difficult decisions will be necessary for long-term solutions to fund rising costs and offset revenue reductions. The next chart provides a financial summary of the city funds as outlined in the budget overview and include 2023 actual, 2024 projected, and 2025 budgeted revenues, expenditures, fund balance, and tax data. As noted, the 23-24 net fund balance reductions are contributed to the Hillendale Road Project, various recreation field maintenance, and several other public safety and public works equipment purchases. Wage and benefit increases are proposed to be funded with additional interest earnings, transfer of funds from the tax residual fund, and use of surplus funds within the general operating budget. Please note on the handout on page two, the 2025 city tax rate should reflect $14,616,559 rather than the $15,142,574 it shows. Due to state mandates, the city tax levy continues to be restricted. The allowable increase included in the proposed budget amounted to $213,738 and was based off of 1.82% of net new growth, of which the entire increase will be utilized to offset rising personnel costs. As a result of the levy increase, the estimated city tax rate is anticipated to include a very slight increase from $3.82 to $3.83 per $1,000 of assessed value. Of the total $14.6 million tax levy, approximately $11.9 million will fund expenditures for basic operations in the general fund. $2.2 million will be dedicated for principal and interest payments, and the remainder will be applied towards the active tax district increments. For over 25 years, Muskego's tax rates have reflected a downward trend and includes a very marginal adjustment proposed for the upcoming budget year. The following slides summarize the general fund revenue and expenditure categories reflecting a balanced increase of $890,831 or 4.97%. The monthly cost of proposed operating expenditures amounts to approximately $61.20 per capita, using the latest population estimate of $25,624. It is $2.60 higher than the previous year. Of total revenues, approximately 80% are generated from taxes and state aids. The increases shown in the miscellaneous and other sources categories are the result of the investment earnings generated from our Cedars program and use of surplus funds to give back to the taxpayers. The largest city expenditures category continues to remain within the public safety divisions equating to 48% of total general fund operating costs, which reflects a significant increase over the prior year due to escalating health insurance premiums and pension rate adjustments. The next fund is the debt service fund and is used to account for the principal and interest payments on all general obligation debt. Funding sources include property taxes, tax increment financing, conservation fund reimbursement, and interest earnings. For the current year, the city's total principal balance outstanding is $28 million, leaving a debt capacity limit of $223 million or 86.72%. The $2 million debt reduction over the prior year has contributed to net scheduled payments and the city's strong financial position requiring no new debt issuance to finance capital projects. Future borrowing plans and debt levy projections indicate potential increases due to road conditions and water utility relay main replacements. Summarized in the following chart are the special revenue funds, otherwise known as specific purpose programs. The expenditure activities for 2025 resulted in a projected grand total for all funds combined of approximately $4.6 million, which is slightly higher than the prior year, and includes tax increment related debt payments, various park improvements, reallocation of the conservation coordinators' wages and benefits, and increased refuse and recycling hauling fees due to inclusion of the state tipping fees and residential growth within the community. The final budget for review is the 2025 capital projects and amounts to a net total of approximately $1.7 million, which is approximately $800,000 less than the prior year. Financing for all items will be funded by landfill host fees and consist of various infrastructure-related items and equipment requests from the human resource, public safety, public works, and library departments. This concludes the 2025 budget public hearing presentation. All proposed balanced budgets, including the tax levy, will be considered for approval by the common council this evening. Thank you.
So at this time, anyone would like to be heard on this matter? The common council is still going to be discussing and having conversations about this tonight yet before they either approve, defer, change. But if anyone from the public would like to come up, please state your name, address, and have your, say your speech.
Make sure you sign in when you leave. Over there. No, when you're done. When you leave. No. On the top. Push it towards you. There it is. Okay. I'm not usually on this side. Haven't been. Kathy Chabarati, West 129, South 8837, Boxhorn Reserve Drive. Obviously, Muskego. Just want to, I apologize. I'm trying to make sure this microphone stays in place. I'm not usually on this side. I've not paid a lot of attention when I left because, you know, it was a big job when I was here. I've had people over the last recent years actually ask me to pay closer attention. Everything's been good. And I'm not going to tell you anything you don't already know. And I want to start with saying we have stellar staff. And you guys, many of you, I've worked with you and the staff, and I know that the staff always works hard to keep their budgets down. We have an unusual situation that I've been paying attention to, which is using one-time fund sources for the budget. That's not wise. And I know all of you know that. So again, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But I think a little more looking, and that's your job, it's your budget now, is to take the time. And I hope that you find those, because you're using more than one, one-time funding source. That is a concern. And I know you all know that, because that's an issue going into the next budget. So I just kind of want to share that. The other thing that I want to share is you might also want to entertain the idea of because of a tight budget this year, is that any expenditures that you authorize in this budget for the next year, when they come in under budget, despite the purchasing policy just for one year, that those don't get spent, and they come back to council so that you can evaluate that considering your situation right now. That's it. And I thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Going once, twice. I declare the public hearing closed. Moving on to consent agenda. Voucher approval and resolution 0602024, award of bids for the Idle Isle Boat Launch Replacement.
Move to approve and gross. Move to approve and gross.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Hi.
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 Posed. Posed. All right. Passes unanimously. New business. Finalize and recommend the 2025 city operating budgets. So I'll need a motion and a second to get it on the floor, and then we can discuss.
Move to prove. Second.
All right. I'm going to give an address again on this. The 2025 budget process has been the most difficult I've experienced in my 20-plus years of public service. Muskego has always operated as a lean organization. Our staffing levels in every department are well below those of similar communities. In short, we do more with less. The dedication of our staff is something to be proud of. Many of them routinely go above and beyond to serve our community, taking true ownership of their roles. For years, I've emphasized that the way Wisconsin funds local government is broken, allowing only a 1% to 2% increase in new revenues annually while expenses rise 4% to 8% is unsustainable. We've managed in the past through incremental changes and creative budgeting. But I'm here to say that we can't do that anymore. We've cut to the bone, and I'd argue we're now losing muscle. Last year, we avoided major cuts due to the increase, an increase in shared revenue. At the time, I, and along with other local leaders across the state, warned that this was a temporary fix, a one- or two-year Band-Aid at best. Muskego and the rest of Waukesha County sends $1.5 billion in income and sales tax to Madison every year. In return, we receive about $60 million back. Meanwhile, the state is sitting on a $4.2 billion surplus. We don't need to raise tax to fix this. What we need is to refund some of the surplus through direct checks to the hardworking families and increase state revenue to our, to our local communities for roads, police, fire, and other services. Because of this outdated funding model, I have presented you with a balanced budget. Yes, approximately 200,000 of it relies on one-time funding sources. This isn't ideal, but under the circumstances, I believe it's the best option to maintain the basic services for our citizens. Budgets at the end of the day are educated guesses. If you are uncomfortable with the 200,000 in one-time funds, you could, you could opt to adjust our revenue projections also. This year, our actual revenue exceeded our projections by a significant amount. It's simply a guess. If you approve this budget as presented, I propose that we engage our HR director and healthcare consultants to examine our health insurance offerings. This could include discussions with the school district about a joint self-insurance. The district approached me as recently as yesterday about new ideas, but this will take time and expertise to explore. It is really the only one or two areas of the budget where we can make some meaningful change and not impact services. In closing, I presented you with my budget. It's now your budget. Any changes moving forward will need to come from you, and I'm sure if we work together, we can come up to the best solution. Thank you. So with that, who wants to start discussion? Hold me, Wolf.
I just got a question before I start, actually. On this financial summary here, which would be third page, if you count the front page, it says 2024, or 23, 2023, 2024, fund balance reductions are contributed to various capital projects expenditures, including the Hillendale Project. What does that mean?
That means that when we, a number of our projects from last year, we use some fund balance to pay for the capital items so that.
So we?
So the year before, we did the same note.
What's that?
The year before and the year before that. I mean, that's, it's just indicating what we're, what we're utilizing some fund balance for.
Okay. Okay. I just want to, I didn't know if there was a dollar amount or something that went with that or something.
Well, there was a reduction. It says, I mean, whatever the differences between the 23, 2023 and the 2024, we'll show that the difference in what the.
What, a 16.6 to 15.3?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that what that is? Okay. I didn't, I just was clarifying. I didn't, I didn't know exactly what it was, because I know I had questions on that Hillendale and Test Corners project, which leads me to believe that, for some reason, it's why we're in the predicament we're in right now, as far as the budget shortfall. But as long as you got me started here, I got some highlights here on charges. And most of them seem to be repeat, so I might beat a dead horse here a little bit. But let's see, there is from page 13 to page 26. And it's, like I said, I mean, there's probably a few extra, but I'll start off with, on page 13, if you go down to 5506, they all start with 100.01.01.01556. Software charges were up 163%. It looked like we were kind of flatlining. All of a sudden, we go from 66, well, that's the annual production, to 17.5. So we're asking for $10,000, $11,000 more. That's a, that's a big jump.
Yes. So that was for HR, that was brought forward to council. It's the HR software for allowing, when we hire new hires, when we.
Okay. So that's a new software that?
Yes. It's a, it's like a data, it's like a database.
I think she asked for $25,000. I questioned that when she was asking for that. Okay. So that, that makes sense then. I'm just looking, I'm looking at some of the bigger things. This is, now we get into some of the reoccurring charges. If you go down to 5502, under government, general government on page 13, so that's about the fifth from the bottom. Again, we're looking at 176% increase for computer charges. Now, just stay with me on this theme here. You go to the next page, under general government law, 14, page 14, go to 5506 again. That's the third paragraph in general law. We're up 45%. And I can go through all these and pull out government charges under government court. We're up 7%. I mean, some of these are, it just, network charges, 48%. I, there's a theme here of real high increases percentage-wise. Computer under city hall, 78%. I can keep pulling these out. 22.9. If you want me, I can go through every one of these and read them, unless you guys have, you want to cut it short and, and tell me why we need to spend this much money on, on all this stuff.
Well, we are becoming, we've become a lot more automated in our day-to-day dealings with everything. I mean, everything, you don't buy software anymore. So years ago, you used to, you know, buy a software package and you owned it. Now you, you essentially rent it from year to year.
So you're doing leases? I got it.
Essentially, yeah. So, I mean, and.
So these, but these are projections. I mean, they seem like they're pretty high projections when you start putting the percentages together. Maybe dollar-wise, some of them are small, but some of them are large. I mean, are these actual projections? I guess, I don't know how Kathy came up and presented that. It kind of falls in line on my type of thinking here. And I think she had a good idea, which I didn't even think about, as far as, if we don't spend this money and it goes back in the general fund, I'd like to see how much money is not spent.
Oh, and you do get an audit report every, we just got it a few weeks, about a month ago. But we do do, when we do our full audit, it has what the ending fund balance that's carrying over.
Yeah. No, I understand. But I like, I like to see that money not being spent. I mean, that's, that's the best part of what she said.
It's not being spent. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, it does go, it goes into fund balance.
Right.
And then you can allocate that the following year on a capital project or not spend it, keep it in there, do it to, I mean, but that's.
Well, I understand.
That's been the practice forever.
But I've just seen a reoccurring theme here, and it seems like it's a lot of extra money on the, on the, hate to beat up the IT department. Maybe it's what you need to do. I don't know. It just seems like a lot of funds percentage-wise. Now, I'll move into the next part of this. Just food for thought there.
Good. I know we have our, can I just interject?
Yeah, go ahead.
One question. Is that okay? Can I be recognized?
Sure.
These questions that we're asking, is it possible to ask them to the department, to get the departments to?
Well, when we get to that point, I will have them come up. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I'm back on now?
Yeah.
Okay. For instance, page 14, landline long distance.
Are you going to come up and?
We're going to be 5601. We're going to move up from, looks like 25. I mean, what are we doing with long distance that, I mean, is long distance more expensive now? I thought long distance was kind of included with the telephone bills. Now we're looking to increase that 25%.
Hello? There we go. Do you want me to address the long distance first?
Sure.
5506, under government, the last column's down there, page 14, under general government, not departmental.
Landline long distance is, we have two PRIs in the city, which are lines coming in. There's one line coming in at PD, and there's one line coming in at city hall. Those run about $16,000, $17,000 a month, just to have phone service for the.
Three to 3,500 between the two together? Add them together?
It's $1,700 for both.
For both? $1,700 a month? Okay.
Yep. And then also in landline long distance, we also have our Centrex lines, which are the old analog lines, which is old technology, which AT&amp;T has given me till April 20 of '25 to get off of those lines. So I've been slowly changing those lines over to regular lines or other things for the devices that use them, i.e. alarm lines, elevator lines, fax lines is the big one.
So did the prices go up, though? I mean, that's why you're asking for more money?
Prices go up, yes.
Did they go up for the landlines?
Well, our contracts coming due with AT&amp;T, I have a meeting with them, I think the end of December, to review.
Okay. Appreciate that. If we go down below that, you have a couple more big increases, 46 and 23%. So it'll be 58, 5810 and 5820 under, just right underneath the long distance one I had brought up. So you're asking again for $22,000 more between the two. I mean, we're up to $80,000 on the city landscape maintenance.
Landscape or landline?
If we, if we could, if you, I mean, we can get back to like other categories. Do you have any more for IT at this time?
This is, I'm going right down in a row here. I didn't break it apart. I'm more, the way this is presented to me is the way I'm presenting it to you guys.
All right.
IT, yeah, just all the computer charge. Let me see if I can find another one real quick for you.
I can explain why the computer charges have gone up in every department, if you want me to.
Well, here, we'll just pick this one then. Page 16, everybody, 5507. About a little closer to the bottom of the charts. New York, I mean, new network charges. We're looking at, we run about $100,000. Now we're looking for $158,000. That's a 48% increase.
Yep. I can explain the bulk of that away. So in 2021, we had bought new storage equipment to hold all the data. And at that time, for capital, I ran, I rolled the service costs, the annual costs into capital for three years. It comes due this year. And that is $19,000 for annual costs. So that's part of the cost. The other cost that goes up is the DR for licensing costs. This year, we did a DR site at the school district. I need perpetual licensing to keep that going at the school district for disaster recovery.
So you're going to have new charges coming in this year that you didn't have in the past?
Correct. And that's about $7,000.
That's good enough. I'm just, I was just looking for discrepancies here. So let me see what else, if I want to ask you, as long as I got you up there.
Sure.
Try to pull out some of the bigger ones here, because city hall, 78%. Well, here's, you know, again, computer charges, city hall, page 18, maybe this is part of what you were just telling me, public safety, PW and D building inspections. Computer city, computer charges, 5506 again, that's a great number today. City hall, we're going, we're going to ask for another $5,000. So we're doubling what we're spending now. It's a 78% increase, actually.
Correct. So I had written for a grant that I have not heard back on yet. And when I spoke with finance, they said, show it in the budget. And then if it come, if we get approved for it, we can show it as a revenue. I have not heard, though. I emailed the state this week, and they said that they're waiting on FEMA to get back with some stuff. But that would be about $80,000 that I applied for, for a grant.
How much? 80?
80, which would take care of the bulk of these costs that you're seeing. Because I do the budgets for each department, I had to split out the cost for each department. And that grant for, it's for security, which is going to give us dual authentication on all devices and all users, and also MDR solutions for anti-virus and ransomware, which, as compliance has come down, unfortunately, things are getting more strict. And we have to meet these compliances, so costs are going to go up a little bit. I've tried to tow the line for a few years, but I'm kind of at the breaking point now.
So you're saying you split these up, like I'm looking at recreation, education, there's the computer charges, so you're splitting them up? Okay. So I'm going to bypass some of this then. I'm just going to look for one or two other ones on here that I got questions on.
Okay.
Recreation. I think I might have got what I needed. Wait. Look at his last page here. Oh, yeah. Here's the one I wanted to ask about. Computer replacements, we, I mean, is this on, we're computer, every, every year, we're putting more in, because we moved that up. It seems like we've doubled, almost doubled that since 2020 as far as the cost was. So we went from in the teens to $30,000 now.
That changed, but I think the mobile one went down. I kind of balanced it out, because next year, we're going to need more desktops.
Mobile went down three, and that one went up five. Yeah. So down 30 and up, or up 20%, down 30%, but smaller dollars. Yeah.
And that just kind of comes in with the computer replacement cycle that we have here at the city. We try and change everything out four to five years. Next year's a big push for the PD. We started doing some. But between the PD and the rest of city hall and some DPW workers. We started doing some, but between the PD and the rest of city hall and some DPW workers, I, they have to have fresher equipment to handle the programming that happens. But we're on about a four to five year replacement cycle.
Okay.
And unfortunately, computer prices have gone up.
No, that, I appreciate it, that, that answers some of my questions on the high percentages. I mean, you know, it's a tough, tough budget. So I, I sat down and spent some time and, uh, hopefully I'm not boring you guys and, uh, thinking I'm crazy going through this. But, um, I, I, that's it for you, thanks, I appreciate that.
Okay, anybody else? Um, yeah, I actually have a question, just in, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but please put your hand up.
Well, she asked if anyone else had a question.
I still have the floor and that's fine on you.
Okay, sorry.
Just so we follow the rules, I'll let you speak and then.
Well, no, if you have the floor, keep it, because I'm going to.
Well, if she has questions, it's her, I, I, we stay with one, one department head? Keep one department head going and then we'll switch back.
That's fine, we can do that.
Well, yeah, that was my thought, as long as she's still up there. Um, it was just in regards to your memo, it just, um, the, um, and kind of goes along with my question a couple of weeks ago about how, you know, things that we outsource and, um, the forty thousand dollars for, um, consulting. Is that all, and I'm sure, you know, some of it is necessary, but is there any of this that the people in IT can do that we don't need to have a consultant's?
My staff does everything that we absolutely can. There's some stuff that's higher level and, and honestly, you don't want my staff maybe necessarily working on firewalls, which is the backbone of the network. Um, that doesn't happen very often. It's maybe once or twice a year, we have to update them, make new rules and regs depending on the software that the staff is using. So that forty thousand hasn't changed in, in many years. Um, and that also covers, if, according to my memo, it covers all the camera stuff for like the point-to-point network. It covers copy repairs that aren't covered under current service contracts and any miscellaneous things. If, you know, I need a circuit for an electrician to come, it's covered under there. It's very miscellaneous and they usually give money back out of that account, at least I tried to. Last year was the first year I ran it to the bone.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay, so basically, there's nothing we could shave off of that. I'm just trying to look for shavings here and there on these, um, oats, you know, consulting fees with all departments, not just yours, not picking on you. I'm just like, can we shave ten grand off here?
You can do, yeah, you can do that if you like.
I mean, what do you typically use? I mean, you said you took it to the bone last year, but what is it?
Last year, yeah.
What is it typical?
Um, well, like if you look on my sheets, like, uh, twenty.
What page?
Um, I'm sorry, on the memo.
On your email memo?
On the third page that I sent. Uh, twenty-three, there was zero, but twenty-two, I gave back thirteen thousand dollars. Twenty-one, I gave back fifty-two hundred and twenty, I gave back eight thousand. It really depends on the projects that are coming due for the year and what capital items I have. Like I needed help for the disaster recovery piece at the school district, so I had to do a block of time for that. So some of that stuff I just, I can't do and I don't feel comfortable doing because I don't want to mess it up because it is important that we have our data backed up. So, I mean, you, you can take money away if you'd like. It's your budget.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions for IT from different Alderman? Thanks, Barb. Alderman, Wolf, the floor is back to you.
Okay, uh, we'll go back to page fourteen, under general government, non-departmental. Five, eight, one, zero. Uh, audit and special accounting. I don't know who's going to answer this one.
What line are you on?
Who's that? Page fourteen, fifty-eight, ten, under government, non-departmental. Audit and special accounting. While you're looking, we're looking for that, I, I've seen it's a forty-seven percent increase, forty-six, six, seven. It, it looks like this year we spent forty-eight thousand, do we have a special project on that? I mean, but it looks like in the years in the past, it's been in the teens. And we're looking for twenty-two thousand there, which is seven percent higher, or seven thousand higher. But what, what are we doing with that? What, what is a?
So the, the contract is coming up within the year, so we're anticipating an increase because the rates have been status quo for over three or four years.
Oh, for the audit? The person, that, like the person who gave, gave us that presentation? Their, their fees to do the?
Yes, because we had a, a multi-year agreement and, um, they held the class study over several years.
That answers that one.
Yep, and it's also in anticipation of possible borrowing, just in case the audit fees would increase if we were to do a borrowing.
Oh.
So you could technically probably take it down five if you're looking for additional funds.
Yeah, I mean, in the long scheme of things, if you could pull seven out five times, it would, you know, if you just pull seven thousand out, it's not going to do a, I'm just looking in general here, trying to get some explanations in and educate myself a little more when I go through these. If, if you look underneath that, it's a city road landscape maintenance. I don't know who's going to answer that one.
Just, so we follow the same path? It's okay, I just ask if anyone else has any questions for finance?
Okay, yeah, let me look, yeah, see if anyone else has any questions.
Does anyone else have any questions for finance?
Let me just go through since I have to.
Not at the moment, I might.
I think that's the only one for here.
All right, you're back, you're back then.
Oh, here, telephone.
You're on deck.
Computer, oh, we did that. Bear with me. I don't think there's any more. If I missed it, I'll, I'll, I'll go back to it, but I think computer.
You had mentioned, you had mentioned landscaping fees and I, do you want me to touch on that and what they?
Well, there's a couple in there as we go, but yeah, let me, let me throw out which one we're at so everybody can follow that. It's right underneath the one we were just looking at, it's fifty-eight, twenty. And what's happening there is, uh, we're looking to do another fifteen thousand dollars. And I know we just bought a lawnmower and, uh, we just changed companies. So I, 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 I'm just, want to know what we're doing with this money now.
So the landscaping, um, contract is coming due at the end of the year, um, for like all the, like grass cutting and the medians and all that. Um, and we're anticipating, uh, an increase on it. Um, so we have that budgeted in. If you guys lower that amount, we would just try to figure out what areas we're either going to let the, you know, maybe we let the grass grow an extra, you know, instead of doing fifteen times a year, we do twelve. Um, we could do that. There's, um, Scott had some ideas of taking a look at, um, say like edging, which is in the contract. If they, you know, depending where the contract comes in, um, if we need to reduce from that, if edging is still good from this year, maybe we can skip a year of edging and do it, you know, every other year versus. So there's a number of things that, he has that placeholder in there, but if we need to reduce it, we'll reduce it. But it's going to, it, it, it's all scope of work.
And, and this is nothing, this is just roads.
Um, well, there's.
This one says city road landscape maintenance, that's what I want to, because I know Ryan, we just did the lawnmower and I, I think we're, I, I'm not, I don't want to be confusing myself with parks and roadside.
You hear me? Yeah. So if we go through with the lawnmower request, it takes a year to build, so that.
Oh, we don't have, we're not going to get the lawnmower? Oh, okay. But we're, are we going to, is this, am I confusing what I'm thinking here or is this just roads?
It is, uh, we bought our parks and lawns, it's maintenance.
Okay, so it's everything? Okay, so for one year, we're going to go up fifteen thousand plus to cost a lawnmower, in theory?
In theory, yes.
Okay, so I just look at the, the large amount of twenty-three percent. I know we just changed companies and we took a company with a higher bid and are we going out the bid?
Actually, let me correct that, we did not, we took a higher, a company that had a higher, and it was a bid.
It wasn't a bid.
It was a quote.
A quote.
They were higher and they agreed to match the lower price.
Right, sorry, I misspoke there.
Got it for the same price.
The, uh, now, are we looking at other quotes when this comes up again or are we just staying with this company?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Well, as long as I got you up there, let's stay on the theme here and see what else I can find. Anybody else have any questions on that one?
If I may?
Yes.
Um, is that the one that used to be Happy Moore?
Correct.
Okay, because I think last time I had a discussion, I know Scott's not here, um, he was going to bring or provide me with some bids on that, that there were.
So we're still going to track them for that.
Okay, no, I, I, my, my understanding was he was going to show me the stuff from last time just because I was confused about, because I got some different information from Happy Moore. Just they're in the chamber, I'm in the chamber, I talk to people, you know, so. Okay.
Quite bluntly, why'd we switch?
Um, I, I think the service got a little stale at some points. There's some stuff, there was more babysitting on our end. Again, we wanted to see if we could get a fresh look. I think it, um, it worked well.
Excuse, and, and he's happy to quote again on the next quote, right?
Sure, he's, he's welcome to quote again, yes.
And like what the mayor talked about too, is, I mean, we could technically take this fifteen K out and possibly skip a mo here and there and make things work out and.
I wouldn't be in favor of necessarily, although I would do is I could possibly take over more of my staff than purchasing. We're trying to figure out what we, I'm trying to come up with a first word, would it be?
I think.
Yeah, it, out of the, it's a two-year contract. If I get the more than I'm purchasing in twenty-five and twenty-six, then we can go back to negotiating table, have company assets and maybe do some savings or maybe add some things to it.
Okay, it's like.
As it is a year to your contract.
Yeah, yeah, and we're just, again, just trying to look for some little tweaks here and there where we can tighten this up. I mean, this is our budget now and we need to. So, exactly, and we want the city to be nice, but like I said, I, I don't think there's any bad questions here.
Anyone have any other questions for Ryan? Alderman Kabaki?
I've got a general question about the budget itself. I think we have to keep in mind that a budget is an estimate. We look at our crystal ball each year and find out what the, what the costs are going to be, uh, what the projected expenses are going to be. Uh, the staff is online to look at these individual details. And I think you're going to find, and you found already, Rob, that the staff has got an answer for each and every line question that you're going to ask for because they look at these lines individually. If you look at the, the budget itself and, and just looking at the investment income, we projected six hundred and thirty thousand dollars of income throughout the year from our investments. We realized a, a, a gain of one point two five million or one, yeah, about one point two five million, and that's through August. So there are discrepancies in this budget, that things that we cannot control, things that we can only look at and visualize and guess in the future. So a budget that's off two hundred thousand, that's a eighteen million dollar budget, is a little over one percent. I trust the staff, I trust the staff to look at every line item in this. I've asked questions, we've had an opportunity to ask questions over the last three or four weeks of each and every one of these items. And now we're here at the eleventh hour, taking a look at this budget once again. Again, a budget is an estimate.
Try to, try to adjust me as part of our new rules.
It's a, as part of our new rules, I will. Um, it, it, it's an, it's an estimate. Um, it's a, it's a global look at what we're able to do in the future. I encourage you to look at this budget in that manner and approve the budget as presented. Thank you.
Okay, I got the floor again?
Wait, are you still going through it? Yes.
Okay.
Can I, can I respond to?
No.
Kevin?
You, you, you can get the floor after, if we're talking, we're talking, no, we can go back. Is there any questions for Ryan on public works?
I still have more to say for Ryan here. I have to say though that, uh, I work for a living and I, 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 I do this part-time. So, uh, Kevin, you might have all the time in the world to go through this budget and trust who you want. I appreciate that, I appreciate the staff for the time they put into this. Uh, the mayor for trying to put it together, it's not an easy task. But I have questions and I have them today. I didn't have them last week or two weeks or three weeks ago, I have them today. And if I'm boring you, I, uh, I apologize. But, uh, on the next note, as far as I got, Ryan up here on page twenty-one, uh, fifty-nine, sixteen, under public works, utility, street lighting division. Uh, our maintenance is going up thirty-three percent. Uh, we've done a lot of work on those, on the lights everywhere, I don't, the poles, I think this is all separate money. Everything's LED. I, I'm just trying to figure out why we're, we're, we're adding more money in the street lighting. Page twenty-one, up on top. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's twenty-five hundred bucks.
Right, it's, it's not so much the actual picture of the poles, we're pretty much everything's in retro. Here, all of Gainesville, um, three of our city buildings have been, it is the, I guess, infrastructure portions of it. That will be, there's two fuses in each level of Gainesville. There's a short somewhere, each one of those fuses is right around that center.
Okay, and you guys change them yourself or you hire out?
We have staff, I'll, when we get, it's just higher.
Okay.
Then we bring a contractor, but it's more or less.
So you're seeing, you're seeing that you're going to have a need for more money then? Okay, let me just see what else I have on here, I'm just. For you, I thought there was one, but maybe it was for Scott, but let me just see here. Education, no, I think, maybe this isn't for you, but, um, I don't know, under, on page twenty-six, we have other financing usage, ninety-two, seventy. Uh, GFTRF to comp ABS fund, it's a eighty thousand dollar increase.
I'm sorry, what line were you at?
Page twenty-six, ninety-two, seventy, under other finance uses. I don't, I, I, to me, it seems like it's a Scott issue, but I, I don't know, maybe it's, someone else can answer it.
Oh, yeah.
That's not you, Ryan? I, I don't, maybe it's Sharon.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I mean, that's a big, that's a big chunk of change there, so.
Right, absolutely. The definition is on page fifty-five, under compensated absences, the last item.
Fifty-five?
Yeah. And basically what that is, is the compensated absences fund, um, was determined per resolution fifty-three in twenty fifteen. This is another GASB recommendation. Um, it funds anybody who's terminated payouts for retirement and so on. Um, we also have to balance, we take all the city employees and come up with the total for all their leave time and we, we have to fund that a hundred percent. That is what we decided to do.
To the audit, is it suggestions for the audit? So to move up that much money, is you're taking it as a suggestion?
Employees get higher rates, that total balance gets increased. So we also have to do an audit adjustment and that's increased over the years. So yes, you could take that down, we're not anticipating a lot of retirements next year. So I would say a safe number, maybe twenty thousand.
Because I, because I do see that.
We may have to.
I do see in the past, it was as high as three hundred thousand dollars.
Correct, we had several officers retiring that year.
Alderman Hamel.
Thank you. So if I understand you right, it's unrealized liability that may not incur this year.
Technically is if the city were to shut down and we'd have to pay out everybody's leave time balance. It's a, again, it's a GASB requirement and it's something that the council authorized back in twenty fifteen, per policy. And it actually helps our bond rating, um, and, you know, different reports.
What would happen if we decrease that? Would our bond rating go down?
Potentially.
Thank you.
Now, I'm back, me.
I, I had a question about that seat. So you said, um, knocking that down about twenty grand wouldn't be out of the realm of possibilities?
Correct, there is a chance, you know, it would, if somebody, if we have more employees who retire that are unknown at this point, yeah, it, it would go up, but that's what we have the contingency for, the ninety-four thousand. But I would feel comfortable, um, I'm not aware of, um, any other retirements this year coming up, maybe with it, one or two.
So you mentioned, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna, because I'm just, got a little tally going here of things that we could hopefully just pull out and.
Yeah, I would say ten.
Tweak a little bit.
Ten to twenty thousand I would be comfortable with.
Okay, thank you.
It might, it's back to me, as long as I got Sharon. Uh, sixty-six oh six, right above that, under contingency funds. That ninety-four thousand is part of the money that we're going to use in a special revenue to balance the budget. But at the same time, we're going to eliminate that fund, but we're going to add eighty thousand to another fund for security. Am I right?
Could you repeat that?
Page twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Sixty-six oh one, right above where we were at, under, uh, contingency.
Right.
That ninety-four thousand is what we're using. That 94,000 is what we're using as special revenue to move into the budget to try to balance it, right? Is that the 94,000?
No, so the 94,000 is per policy, we are required to have 0.5% of our expenditures.
So, that's going to stay, that'll stay.
That stays.
Okay, gotcha, thanks.
But what you're asking is, um, in the mayor's proposed budget, he has 94,000 of revenue use of surplus funds that will offset that because we haven't really utilized the contingency in the past. And my concern with that is, um, again, with bond rating, if they're looking at use of surplus funds, if we can come up with other savings that amount to 94,000, it would be beneficial for 2026.
Okay. Thanks. Um, let me just go back, I got a couple other questions here. Um, I think we're done, sorry, Ryan, if you just.
That's all right. Anyone have any questions for Ryan before I log?
Oh, I did. Um. Page, I think it was page 19. We're jumping around here a lot here. No, maybe it wasn't, wait. Um. Okay, page 19, the last line, um, 5820 contracted services, I'm back to that, that's my linchpin, I guess.
Yep.
That went up to, that's up 10 grand, up 50%.
Page 19?
Uh, page 19, the last line, 5820 contracted services.
Yes.
Yeah. Wondering if that's what, why that's gone, you know, up 50%, if that's something that we could look at, keeping it where it is.
So, contracted services, it fluctuates so much with our department, a big reason is leaf collection.
Is what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Leaf, leaf collection. So, example, um, last year, uh, after we collect all the leaves, we broke a tub grinder in, we tub grinder leaves, recycle them, everybody comes and picks them up, I think you guys are all familiar with that, to take them back for compost. On a good year, I have spent maybe eight to 10,000 dollars, leaves are dry, they don't get snowed on, not a lot of heavy rain. Uh, the worst year was 26,580 dollars, just to grind up the leaves. Um, on top of that, it is things above and beyond that my staff can handle. My staff does a, a heck of a lot in-house, um, a lot more than others. It is plumbing fixes, uh, as I just told Rob, it's not necessarily in that category, but it's the lighting, it's electrical plumbing, um, it is stuff that possibly, we have other projects going and I have to bring somebody in to assist us, trucking, heavy equipment, um, safer equipment. There was a tree on our right-of-way, uh, last year, and it was over a house, a garage, and a greenhouse. I brought in a company with a certified crane and arborist to remove everything, they craned it over two houses to get it down. That's not something I want to take the liability for, so as I've been noticing all this, trucking used to be 85 bucks an hour, it's now 125 bucks an hour. Um, if we get some rain when we're picking up leaves, I'm looking at like a 10 to 15 to 20,000 dollar swing on how much it costs to take care of leaves. There's smaller things in there, I can, I can chew some out of it, but I, I don't want to be looking for it. I mean, that's something that I have to grind the leaves to get rid of them every year. And I would say that's about 75% of that.
Okay. Well, like I said, it's just these things that are up 50% really jump out.
And a lot, a lot of it is gone with how the market's gone up. It, it is like trucking fuel, it all gets kind of handed down with us. For, for these guys, this is show up, is they have mobilization charges now for 1,500 dollars, so.
Okay, so you think that we can't take anything out of that one?
In this one, I would, I would not want to be looking for it. I mean, uh.
Okay. Again, I'm.
Yeah, um, well, she's talking to me. Do you have something to add?
So, go ahead, you can, someone else can.
If I could add a recommendation, Ryan, is that, is that for refuse recycling? Cause what we could do is move that expenditure into the refuse recycling special revenue fund and get it out of operating, if it, if it follows under refuse recycling.
We could probably take some of that out, yeah. I mean, I would, I would have to say on a safe bet, 20,000 dollars, to be safe, would have to go just towards that portion of leaf collection.
Well, you're trending 12,000 already this year, if you, if you, if it stays the same, you'll be, you know, 17,000 for the year.
Yeah.
It looks like you've been 20, 20, 23, 21, 24.
So, with that suggestion of Sharon's, we could knock this down to 20?
Right, and, and that would also help our aid because we have to report all the expenditures for refuse recycling, and we could potentially get more funds if we move it.
That sounds fabulous.
Okay. I, I will add though, I mean, as, depending on, we, I mean, we just started collecting, depending on how this all falls, I may be looking for more. I mean, it's, it, it all fluctuates.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to go on record by saying that.
These leaves aren't even turning colors yet. Might, might not have to, might not have to move them till next year.
They're starting to fall today.
Yeah, but that is the majority of it, is leaf collection.
Well, I, I just see the highest one on here was like, you had a 24,000 one year, but, um, like Sharon said, if we're going to o- offset some of this, I think maybe the 20 would be okay, let's try it.
It's up to you guys, I'm just here to manage it.
Thank you.
Aldman Wolf.
Okay, back to me. Sorry, putting you guys through all this pain.
You're all good.
Nope.
Time is yours.
Health, under, well, let me make sure I didn't miss one, I'm, I'm on page 17 under, and I'll start with police, just because he's been quiet back there.
You're good with me.
Are you done with Ryan?
Yeah.
Can we reserve the right to call you back up if we?
I don't care.
Okay.
I'm not going anywhere.
She can bring the floor up later, or someone else can bring up the floor.
He's, he's not leaving, so if you.
Um, I'm going to go to page 17, under public safety, police, and, and here's a theme again, just like I did with the IT, uh, health, so 5203 will be the magic number. Uh, if you go across, it's a 16% increase. Now, not to, not to pick on him or anything, I'm going to go down to public safety below that, 5203 to say page, you got a 23.9% increase. Now, I can go through all these and do this, now I'll go to page 19, I see a 5% increase, I see a 25% increase on the next subject, um, 18, 28, 27, 22. Now, the reason I bring this up, so page 21, 50.64, 50 point, 53.6, I, I don't want to dwell in here, but when I started looking through this, and it keeps popping out at me, eh, I thought our health was going up, I must say less than 10%, just to paraphrase it from how you move your numbers, I think it was 8.5, but I'm not seeing that reflected in, in these columns, so I'm, I'm just, I, I just need explanation on it.
So, I mean, Sharon, you want to jump in on this, or, I mean, well, I'll start by saying, yes, our health is, last, this year went down 10%, next year it's going up 8.5, but that doesn't mean that the allocation, you're looking under a specific, like the police department, um, they may have had a, um, officer, uh, somebody that, um, retired that wasn't taking our health insurance, and they hired somebody that's taking a family plan, um, somebody might switch from a single to a family plan, I mean, there's, there's, it, it moves throughout the budget year.
Just, so I understand, you know, we have to go through this huge thing, if I understand from what you said before, it, it's going up 8.5%. I was thinking that if it's, if it's, if it was $10, it's going to go up 85% or whatever, you know, um, eight.
The premium is, yes.
But not the total dollars that we're spending, that's what I thought it was, total health is going up 8.5%, you're telling me that's not correct?
The, the, the premium for each of the levels are going up 8.5%.
Okay, but that's not the to, that's not the dollar amount that's going up, cause when I see this, it looks like it's going to be a higher dollar amount, is it because of new hires and things like that?
Correct.
That's what you're saying?
Or different utilizations of the, of the benefit.
Okay. Okay, I, so I, I, that's why I, I went through this and highlighted, cause I, I thought the total dollars was going up. But it's just total premiums going up, but there could be more costs depending on how many people are involved with it. Okay, so that, that'll take care of that, but let me, let me go back to a few more questions. As long as I got to start from the beginning and run it the way it's presented, um, I don't have much more, so Kevin, bear with me.
Take your time, I'd rather have you guys go through this and be comfortable with it and your decisions than rush through this, we're, I mean, we can always defer if we need, if we're getting too late and start it up again.
I'll just ask you real quick, without going through those housekeeping services, are they going to increase, are they going to increase our housekeeping services?
So, that's another one that the bid's coming up this year, we, the amount that we're paying right now is, well, the reason we use the vendor we use is because they were by, like, by far the cheapest. Um, we had a service issue, a huge service issue of quality with them, so we have a new, um, franchisee, same company, different franchises that took it, took over the contract, um, that contract's going to be coming due, I would expect that the new people, um, is one of these, you pay what you get for, and we're, we're thinking that it's going to be up quite a bit.
Okay. I mean, that wasn't, that wasn't, wasn't a big one, I just shot out, you know, like we were talking, I threw it out, um. Now, I see public safety, volunteer fire department, page 18, the first one, I mean, we're spending a lot of money on hydrant rentals, what, what does that mean?
So, we have to reimburse the water utility for their hydrants for our fire safety.
Oh, okay, so, that's just like a standard increase then?
We're kind of paying ourselves, but it's going into a different budget.
Yeah, cause it seemed to be pretty steady going, and all of a sudden we're dropped, we're, we're adding another 12,000 into that, are we projec, is that going to go up? Or is that just a projection, or?
Well, we did a simplified rate crease for the water utility, and that requires us to do what we did.
And then, public safety, again, non-departmental, on the same page, number 18, 66, or 6023, trunk, or, uh, radio operating costs. First of all, I don't even know what that is, and, and second of all, uh, it looks like it's, it's, it's slowly ri, I mean, we've, we doubled since 2020 in pricing, so I, I, I'm just questioning, what is that and why we're spending so much money on it?
Chief.
6023.
Oh, wait, that was fire, never mind, this is fire.
That is fire?
What page?
Yeah.
Uh, 18.
I believe, wait, I, I take that back, this might not be fire.
Public safety, I don't know, it could be radios, I don't.
The bell comes from Waukesha County, and it's, it's, it is part of the police, it's the radio, um, there's an agreement that we have, and the, the price escalated.
Waukesha County increased their fees to us.
Figures. Um, let me just go through here, find out a few more things here, health, 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 we think we went through that. Uh. We talked about the maintenance. Housekeeping, I brought that up already. Um, you, I don't, I don't know what this is either, maybe I, maybe I do, and I just don't realize what I'm reading, but on page 24, uh, 5420, under culture, recreation, education, PW and D Recreation Administration, so it's the first paragraph down, 5420, MNSD, facility user fees, MNSD, what is that?
Metro, um, Milwaukee Metropolitan School District?
No.
No? Oh, this is a school district, I'm sorry.
What is that?
Take that back. Oh, we're, we're in health, I mean, we're in recreation, their fees went up, right? They're, they're charging us more to use our classrooms and such.
The school. Oh, the school, that's.
The school district.
Miss Eagle, Norway School District.
Miss Eagle, Norway School District, yeah.
Oh, God. Okay, so, so we're 11,000 more? Cause I mean, it looks like we've been, that's like four times what it was in 2020.
Tammy, do you want to address that?
Which would be double what we're planning to use this year, well, maybe our annual projection is high, it looks like, cause if I put, we, we might hit 12,000, you're saying 18, but, uh.
Sure, we will hit 18,000 dollars, the school district in April or May raised their use fees across the board for everybody using their facilities. We used to pay $10 an hour to use, uh, classroom, or the small gyms, or cafeterias, library, they raised that to $20 an hour, they raised their gym use to $65 an hour. We just received an August bill, which I just submitted, I think was $8,000, for July, August, and September, so we'll still have the October, November, December payment, so we will hit those numbers. Because we don't own a facility, we have to pay the district to use their facility.
Yeah, 122%, thank you, school district, same, same, same taxpayer, but, uh, yeah, okay, just, I just, it didn't, I didn't know what it meant, I was trying to figure it out, so, I guess that makes sense. And I'm almost done, I think. Uh, well, as long as we got you up here, I'll ask this one. Culture, recreation, education, page 25, recreation childcare program, 5820, so it's the first paragraph, 5820 on page 25, contracted services, uh, 231% increase, so it looks like we're going from 6,000 to 22,000 dollars.
So, in that GL, traditionally, it's always been just our field trips, so the cost of the busing, and then like the entrance fee to go to the zoo, the ticket, the movie theater ticket, or whatever. With the loss of the police station, I have to pay either the school district or find a rentable facility to move our old town hall, or our vets park, the outside camp location to when it's raining. So, when it would just start raining in the middle of the day, we would move our kids off-site into the old PD for the couple of hours and come back outside. I now have to plan where to put those kids on those times. I can cut that cost, but then I have to cut that playground site, which has 100 kids.
So, then on a rainy day, is, I mean, a non-rainy day, you have 100 kids?
Correct, we have 100 kids at the old town hall and 100 kids at vets every day.
Okay, but the old town hall, or is that total between the two, 100?
Nope, 100 in each location.
So, if it's rainy, the, in the town hall, they stay, it's no big deal, but if, the outside people have a problem.
Correct, and so.
How many, how many people show up on a rainy day, the, the, 100 usually?
We are.
Pretty much?
We average 85 kids a day at each location, and the, the capacity of the fire for the old town hall is 100 people, so I can't move them there.
No, 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 I know, but I'm saying, if, if they know it's raining, if it's raining out, you still get a full house of kids?
Yes, we're childcare for the, the people who work here in the community, so if we don't offer this program, we have two options, we don't pay to rent a space, and we save that money, but then we cut our revenue line by 40,000 dollars. That program alone, the, the all-day summer camp nets about 80,000 dollars revenue.
Revenue, and will that 80,000 include the 15, six that you're asking for?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a net, it's a profit, essentially.
Yes.
So, it'll be self-sustaining, is that what you're saying?
Correct, every recreation program makes money, we don't offer it, if we know we're not going to be able to cover it, we cancel it.
I just saw that was 231% increase.
Well, there is a, I mean, don't read this, don't read into this wrong, I'm not fighting tearing down that building at all, I mean, I'm fine with that, whatever you guys decide on that. However, if you're, you think it's going to take until like September of next year before we do that, that's another 18,000 dollars in the budget that could be taken away.
And, and I believe it, we're not tearing that building down before September, I mean, I don't know what anybody else believes, but I, I can't see us doing that.
That's 18,000 dollars that she could then use that building for that, for just that thing, we're still not going to use it during winter and have it shuttled as much as we can, um, we still got to run electricity to the building anyway because of pumps and things like that.
Just got to start the water back up.
Right, and we're not going to heat it and things like, yeah, so, I mean, it, we could, that, that's another area that you could save in.
So, then, as long as we have this on the floor right now.
Well, we can't.
Do we talk about, do we want to, can we keep the police station open until September? Is, can we talk about that?
It's, it's a budget.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't see how we could tear it down that bad.
It's a budget issue.
Yeah, I mean, is, is it, is it worth keeping the police station open for the year to cut 18,000 dollars out? Or, not 18, I'm sorry, it'd be 15, right, well, you're still running money, so it wouldn't even be 15, right? You're, you're still running money every month, on, or every year it looks like.
Yeah, that's for the field trips, so like, I can cut the field trips, we just keep So like, I can cut the field trips. We just keep the kids on-site for the entire summer. But they pay, so like, if we go to see a movie, I charge them twenty dollars. We make about a buck per child. I cover all the staff costs. I cover the bus cost. I cover the ticket cost.
Eight thousand or nine thousand out of that.
So the, the increase, the fifteen thousand dollars is strictly for what we will have to pay to rent something.
So you could cut the fifteen, six out?
I can't just use any space. I have to have something that's got.
No, no, I understand that.
Bathrooms and, you know, green space and places for the kids to play.
And Deb, you seem to be keeping allies of this money.
Somewhat. I, I, if I may, ask a question. Tammy, we go way back. My kids all were in the programs. I do recall, um, first, for starters, what is the average amount of rain days?
Uh, well, I would have to move them entirely off-site. It would not be a rain day thing. It would be, because I, so the kids get dropped off at Veterans Park in the morning at seven-thirty in the morning by their parents. I have to plan for what I'm gonna do with them if it starts raining. We had about a dozen rain days this year. We just moved inside.
That's above normal, I would think. It was a crappy year.
Yeah, there were three rain days that we knew it was gonna rain the full day. It was raining the night before, forecasted to rain the full day. We moved them to the school district, which I'm paying sixty-five dollars per hour to use that gym space.
Okay, so, so sixty-five dollars an hour for three days, six days, whatever, is still a lot cheaper than fifteen thousand dollars?
But I still have to plan as if it could start raining any day of the forty-five days of camp.
Okay, and could there, I know when my kids went there, um, they all just went to Old Town Hall for, I mean, I know you just said there's a, a limit, but they all were, ran over to Old Town Hall for an hour or two.
It depended when your kids were in the camp. We didn't have a hundred kids at each site.
Well, you said there's about seventy-five a day, but I, I don't wanna argue with you. You know your numbers better than I do, but there was a good amount of kids there. There was at least seventy kids or more. What about having your program? I mean, I will tell you, since COVID, as a working parent, talking to people in, in jobs and in different capacities, they have a lot more flexibility with their jobs. Kids could potentially, if you tell them ahead of time, if they sign up for the program and they know it's gonna be a rain day, plan ahead that, you know, we're gonna be at this school site or we're gonna be there. They could drop off somewhere else. And then maybe on certain, you know, there, there, there are other things that you don't have to rely on the police station. We never relied on it back then, is my point. We did not go into the police station. That was never even there for us, I mean, it was there, but it was not for us to use. It was being occupied by the police station.
Right.
So, I mean, I think we came in the basement maybe once in a while at City Hall.
We did. We used the old city hall for that instance.
And there's some rooms here. I mean, there, I'm just saying, the few times it rains, we could have alternative plans and alternative instructions for parents and ways to proceed. And the parents would, they want your service. If they want it, they're gonna agree to these things ahead of time. I don't think we need to budget and personally, the, the PD, if we're talking about the PD, if that's on the floor now and we're talking about it, I don't even think people should be in that building. Is that on the floor?
I, I think it was, we were talking if we wanna keep it open for another year, so I guess.
Because, well, what's the cost, the cost to keep it open, I think was, I was told was about fifty thousand dollars. So where's the savings?
Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna heat it in the winter. We're, we're essentially gonna shuttle it. It's just gonna be open in, in the summer for its electrical and their bathrooms.
Well, I, I mean, again.
You were just looking for savings. I just presented this enough.
I, I know. I'm, I'm looking for savings, but I'm also, I mean, again, if this is on the floor now that we're talking about the PD, I have a whole bunch of stuff about the PD. Are we gonna go off on that tangent right now?
Budget related, you sure can.
I, I think to clarify, what I said is that I don't think we could tear it down within the next year, like, time-wise. I, I, I don't see it happening that quick. Maybe I'm wrong.
Okay, well.
And if we could pull the money out and use this for four rain days a year or as many as twelve, which we probably, hopefully won't see that crappy weather again like we did last year, but you never know.
He plans to.
I would be, I would be in favor of opening the PD for that.
Again, we didn't have the PD for years. It was, it's only been for the last few years.
But I'm just, I'm just trying.
Much smaller groups. I mean, I understand that.
I'd really like to see that data. I don't know.
Well, you, either you're calling or the department had a liar.
No.
Well, okay, did we have that many kids back then?
With all due respect, Rick, this is our budget now, not your budget. I'm sorry. I just, I'm, I'm concerned about this budget.
I, I clearly, you're.
And it's our budget.
You have your agenda. Anyway, um, I'm asking the question. Did we have that amount of kids back then or not?
We have, we have had, I, I don't know how old your girls are. I, I know they were in it at least ten years ago. We had Horn and we had kids at Horn Park, the little kids at Horn. Samina was part of that program. And then we had vets and we had Old Town Hall. And the vet site was kept lower because I didn't have places to move them to. And they would move into the, the lower level of City Hall, which was not disruptive to city business. When I moved, and I have moved the kids inside this building when we've had rain issues and they're stuck in rooms one and two, or room one A, one B, we have sixty, seventy kids and their backpacks and their lunchboxes sitting on the floor. As a parent, is that the kind of childcare you wanna pay for? Your kid's sitting in a room on carpet doing nothing. Parents get frustrated and they pull their kids out of our program. They put them in the program cuz we're active and we're busy and we're doing stuff all day. If we don't wanna do the fifteen thousand, that's fine. We'll pay the school district as needed. We can bus kids. I can work out an agreement with the district or their busing company, but we're gonna be paying for the busing costs, which are about a hundred and thirty-five bucks for an hour. So there's different ways to go through it, but the amount was to rent a facility that was conducive to watching and providing childcare to kids. So a place where they could use the bathroom, sit at a table and eat lunch, play in the green space outside if the rain stops. Otherwise, they're just stuck. We've used the Warriors Fieldhouse and sat on turf, AstroTurf all day. It's not fun for the kids and the parents complain about it.
There's, there's a lot of things that aren't fun for the kids and quite honestly, um, I'd prefer them sitting in this brand-new building than sitting in the police station that's potential mold, asbestos, all kinds of things in there. I personally don't even think anyone should be in that building, especially young kids. So I'm.
And I'm okay with that. That's why I put fifteen thousand dollars in the budget to rent a facility to do that.
And we never relied on it before and, um, I just don't think we should be relying on the old PD at all for childcare.
All right. Anything else?
Last question of the night, so round of applause.
I doubt it, but that's good.
As long as you're up here, I think it's for you. Page twenty-four, again, fifty-one, oh, one, under culture, recreation, education, recreation, athletic programs. We're at a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand dollar increase. Which is, again, we go back to twenty-twenty and I know program, I mean, that was twenty-four, then went to forty-four, eighty. Well, you can see a big jump, but then it's kinda steadied out a little bit, but for a hundred and seven thousand dollars, I, I, I don't know what that all means.
So the instructor-related salaries are our businesses and instructors we pay as a contracted rate. So like micro soccer.
You bring people in?
Yep. So the, every program we offer covers all of the expenses. So micro soccer costs eighty-five dollars for a kid to sign up for it. We pay the vendor eighty dollars. So we have a hundred and some kids each session take it. It's for the ski club. It's the karate. It's all of those people that are paid as a contracted person, not an hourly. We have very few hourly employees.
So, wait a minute, I, I may be confused here from what you just said. So you make five dollars on this. Why are we raising this fifteen thou-, thousand dollars?
Because we're offering more programs, so like.
Yeah, but if you're making five dollars off the program, per person.
It's, it's, it's the, you have the, the total of it. So they're offering a whole new program.
Oh, so you might spend eighty dollars a person, but.
This fifteen thousand may generate twenty thousand back.
Correct.
Oh, is another, another program?
Correct. So did you receive my budget that I forwarded on to the mayor? Like, we do a program budget for every program we offer. So it might be an increase in dance classes. We are adding some new ballroom and Latin dances and things like that. So it's new instructor salaries, but the corresponding revenue is coming in.
Alderman Hamel.
So wait, just, as long as I got this, I'm still on this here. The, I'm sorry, Bob. These are self, self, they, they, they pay for themselves, but you put it in the budget. So say it's a hundred thousand dollars and you're gonna make a hundred and five thousand on it, you still put it as a hundred.
Correct.
The hundred and five goes back into the general fund.
Cuz in the budget, there's also revenue, there's, there's revenue pages. So you'll see, you'll see offsetting revenue over.
Okay, just, I just saw the big number and, and, and I didn't know exactly what.
Fair question.
Relate, you know, instructor-related meant. Okay.
Alderman Hamel, did you have anything to add?
That's what I wanted to say. There's an offsetting revenue to, so you clear, covered it up.
Any other questions for Tammy?
Yeah, my mind was going.
Thanks, Tammy.
Yeah, I think.
And are you done, Alderman Wolf, for now?
I wanna just make, turn the page here, make sure I got them all. Yep, I'm, I'm done.
All right, anyone else?
Oh. For reductions for?
Wherever you wanna go in the budget. So I'll, we'll, but we'll follow the same format. If you have a question on a specific, um, department, they come up and then after you ask your question, they.
Well, I wanna thank you, Alderman Wolf, because you've covered a lot of what I was also looking at. So now I kinda have to double-check a little bit to make sure, to make sure I'm not missing anything. Page nineteen. Yep, you got that one. Page twenty-two. Fifty-eight, twenty, again. Um, I don't know if this, this is another one that, again, this jumps out at me. I don't know if Rob brought this one up.
Can you just page it?
Uh, page twenty-two, um, fifty-eight, twenty, again, contracted services. Four lines up from the bottom, ninety-four thousand. It's up.
What was the number again? I'm sorry.
Fifty-eight, twenty. Contracted services is just something that I've been, that's kinda.
Public Works Parks, yes, Ryan.
Yeah.
I didn't bring that up.
I just, and it's not a big amount. It's just a five thousand dollar increase. I'm just wondering if, what that would, page twenty-two, fifty.
It's through my parks budget. Um, same thing I told you about. It just costs more to do things right now. Preparing for the worst, um, is, you said the fifty-eight, twenty?
Twenty. Yeah, fifty-eight, twenty, ninety-four thousand dollars. It's just.
A majority of that, we have our sanitation services out of that, cleaning comes out of that, um, all the parks bathrooms. Uh, anything that happens within the parks, plumbing, electrical. It costs more to get people to show up.
It costs more to what?
To get people to show up.
Oh, like hiring people or what?
Just hourly rates of people.
Okay.
Porta-potties.
So this is salaries?
No, this is just contracted services, our cleaning company that comes in, um, all of our portables, the people that clean our bathrooms. And then if I have to hire somebody to do something within the parks that my staff can't handle.
Okay. Okay.
Any follow-up questions for Ryan? Are you still on Ryan?
I, I do have one as long as you're back up here. I, I was gonna bring this up a few meetings ago. I see the seasonal help has gone way up. I didn't look at, you, you, I mean, something going on with seasonal help? I, I think I mentioned this last, last meeting and I didn't, it didn't get any follow-through on it, but probably, probably cuz you guys weren't here, so.
In, in my department specifically?
Uh, I thought it was like parks and stuff. Maybe I'm, I'm, am I wrong?
Well, it ebbs and flows. I mean, it, it's hard to get kids to show up in general. So I wouldn't so much look at, maybe I have more employees, but I'm still well within my seasonal bucket that way.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I got. If, if no one's got anything to Ryan, I got one last comment because, um, I, I forgot Scott's not here. It was, it was portraying to Scott and I thought, last meeting, um, I brought this up and I, I appreciate the mayor giving me some, some information, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent satisfied. I think, I, I mentioned this before. I believe that's one of the reasons we have our shortfall is I'm still confused and I, I need to be shown in the right direction. The Hillendale and the Test Corner project and the extra million dollars that we gave to roads that was not spent on roads cuz three hundred and fifty thousand and that went to the Hillendale project as well as eight hundred thousand, if I'm not mistaken, if I can find that again, uh, from the uh, landfill money moved over to cover the extra expenses. For some reason, I, I feel that we weren't given an option on what to do on that project if it was over, all that extra money and, 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 and I was under assumption that included Test Corners till you, you got back to me on some stuff that Test Corners still isn't. So that's, that went from five hundred to six hundred and ninety-nine thousand. I, I, I'm trying to follow the pattern here of where our shortfall is on our road money and why we need to take special revenue funds of three, I, I come up with three hundred and whatever thousand, you keep saying two thirteen cuz you, you, we disagree how it's being taken. But the way I look at it is, is we're, we're falling further behind on our road program because of this and we're starting a year off in a negative on our budget. I mean, if we have more money coming in, we don't know. It's not presented to us transparency-wise.
Before we get too far into this and I have, we, we can discuss.
But I asked for that to come back to this meeting, last meeting.
And we can, and, and, and we can and will, but what you're discussing is the capital budget. All of it's the capital budget. So, and we're gonna talk about that tonight.
But the landfill was eight hundred thousand.
All of this.
You didn't have to go to the capital.
All of that, no, this project was a capital, the Hillendale is a capital project. The, the, so that whole thing, we can talk about when we go to capital. Right now, we're talking about operating. I'm not saying we can't talk about, but I wanna stay on the agenda. I, I just gotta stay on the agenda.
I just need to get this figured out here.
And we can do that, but when we get to capital budget, we'll talk about that. Right now, we're talking about operating. Okay?
Okay, got it. Thanks.
I have a quick one. It's under conservation, so I don't know. On page twenty-six, and these are, these are little, but again, I'm looking for any little. There was, um, the computer charges, City Hall, that was up thirty-three, there was thirty-five hundred. Uh, I'm sorry, on page twenty-six, um, fifty-five, oh, six. Computer charges, City Hall.
That would be a Barb thing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, these are the same answers that Barb gave before. It's just they, they get spread between each department.
Okay. Um, cuz that's up quite a bit. And then, um, fifty-eight, oh, one and fifty-eight, oh, four, professional services and economic development. There.
Oh, so you're in planning now, not conservation or are we?
Conservation and development at the bottom, fifty-eight, oh, one.
You're, you're correct. My mistake. I misread it.
And fifty-eight, oh, four. And I'm just, I'm looking, I see it was the same amounts last year, but it seems like we spend a lot less. I'm just wondering, is that something that can just be toned down a little bit?
Um, when it comes, what, what were the two numbers again? I'm sorry.
And fifty-eight, oh, four.
So professional services, um, that one, I would definitely not even slightly recommend lowering, especially with the comp plan being wrapped up. You know, we're on the home stretch of that right now and I'm sure there'll be some expenses that go into next year. There'll be a lot from this year that aren't used, that are probably still gonna be used because of where we're at with that wrapping up process, final production of it. As far as economic development, that's really, I guess, a question of how much the council wants to put towards that. I mean, a lot of stuff in the city kinda happens naturally on its own. Businesses are coming here, developments happen. Let me just look at my notes on that one. On the economic development, we kinda use that for, I guess, what Scott and I would call like low-hanging fruit. So like an example, um, we do, um, partake in some of the chamber media stuff. You know, remember the chamber, that usually comes from economic development. We're promoting what we do as a city and as a department. We do an ad in the chamber guide each year to help the chamber out, but as well as to, once again, kind of think of it as a promotion for the community, right? If someone new is looking at the community. That's what the economic development goes towards. We don't always know what's gonna come up. If there's some kind of grant that comes out there that we might need some assistance on that allows us to put money at something. We'd rather have something there than nothing and miss an opportunity. With that being said, it is something that we've talked about that we'd probably be comfortable saying that the economic development could go from eight thousand to five thousand. It's not a lot, but it's something. I think we'd really be selling ourselves short by not having something and then missing an opportunity for a pretty minimal cost.
Right. Well, and I, I'm in the chamber. I love that you work with the chamber on things, but, um, I appreciate you, um, willing to, I, I was thinking more coming down to four thousand, kind of split, cutting it in half. You said not to do anything with the other, with the professional services, leave that alone and.
No, there's too many law changes and I know Jeff helps us when there's a lot of law changes, but there's constantly things that are changing what zoning and planning offices are and aren't allowed to do that may require like code changes on the fly. And we try to do those internally. We historically pretty much have. But in some scenarios where you might have, um, let's say consultants changing it for twenty communities they work for, there's a cost savings measure to have someone that's done it for a dozen other communities give us like a template rather than us try to scramble it out on our own in a tiny department or two.
Yeah, you guys are awesome, I have to say. Always answering my questions. Always answering my questions, even when I'm wearing my other hat, you guys are amazing, so I want to thank you for that. Okay, so we can take a little bit back on the academic development that wouldn't cause any problems that you foresee.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Adam. Now, I don't know what page it's on, so I'm gonna be, it's not for you, Adam, it's gonna be for, um, HR. Um, and we touched on this-
Kate, do you wanna come up?
We touched on this, um, at the COW.
So HR would be like, if I know what, what specific item, and I can tell you what page for everyone.
That's what I touched on, was page thirteen, the last meeting.
Yeah, the benefit consultant is, um-
So page thirteen, uh, upper, upper third of the, uh, five, uh, fifty-two oh seven? Yes.
And I know, um, last, um, COW, we were provided with, um, a memo from Rick regarding, um, regarding this. I did ask for that to be read out, it wasn't. I did also ask for it to be included in the minutes, which Rick did say he would, and he did not because actually yesterday I was, um, contacted by Sharon and we had a private meeting with the mayor. She wanted to go through some of this with me and kind of explain it to me and break things down, and we were, um-
Thrown out of my office.
Thrown out of the mayor's office.
Yep.
Um, and I'm still very confused, but, um, I just, and I did have a, a correspondence with Kate today, uh, regarding this benefit consultant, and I really, um, I don't see the, the added value in the twenty-six, five fifty for a benefit consultant where I feel that that is something that HR should be managing for us. And I don't see that we're really getting the savings because I'm getting some different communicate, different answers on my questions, so.
Well, do you want me to respond to, um, the benefit consultant and the value it brings to the city essentially, or, um, because philosophically, um, you know, if you, I, I believe that this has sho, I mean, the mayor put out the memo and showed the value in having, um, Cunningham and Butler help us and assist us in our renewal process each year. I mean, last year alone, we, we realized a ten percent decrease in our premium rates, which more than paid for the consulting service itself. Um, they have resources, I'm a department of one, um, they have resources that I don't have access to. They have staff, um, analytic, analytics teams that can do, um, different scenarios that can be used in the negotiation process. Can this be brought in-house? Yes, it can be, um, but I would recommend maintaining our relationship with Cunningham and Butler as they have shown and continue to show, um, their value.
Okay, um, well, and I just did a little like research on my own too for HR directors because, uh, again, in the meeting with Rick, I didn't, we didn't, Sharon didn't really get to fully explain this to me, I talked to her a little after, but, um, I've worked at a lot of companies where the HR people handle this stuff. And I did actually do a Google, Google search on, uh, HR, um, the position is, that is something that they should be doing, is consulting on benefits, not outsourcing. And I, I do feel like we're paying quite a bit for your HR service, you're, it's not a huge city. I mean, you're getting like a hundred and twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year, I feel like paying-
Ninety-nine.
Yeah, that's, I, that's not my salary.
Well, you're getting almost six figures, and I just feel like paying an additional twenty-six thousand dollars to potentially, according to what Sharon said, and Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong, there was only a five thousand dollar actual realized savings or something along those lines, not the large amount that is on this memo?
Well, I think the confusion was, is the thirty-eight thousand represents the department request and the adjustments made. If you're looking at budget to budget, twenty-four versus twenty-five budget, the actual savings is about five thousand. So budget to budget.
Would that be due to like open enrollment changes?
Because these were new requests, you had about thirty-some odd thousand dollars.
No, she's talking specifically about the healthcare.
Oh, the health.
Yeah, that, that was your question, correct? Was on healthcare?
Well, I'm talking about this consultant, and then I'm talking about the memo from Rick justifying the consultant and then my letter from Kate saying that this consultant has saved all this money, but I just feel like I don't see-
So, I'll, I'll address part of that.
Well, I was asking Sharon to address it, if that's okay?
No, that's okay, I'm the chairman, I can decide when I talk.
But this is our budget, I was just asking Sharon to finish.
And I'm answering it, okay? So-
I'm sorry, I-
I'm sorry, you're not recognized.
But you're, I'm, I'm trying to get the answers from Sharon.
I am the chairman.
This is our budget right now, it's not the mayor's budget anymore.
I am the chairman.
But it's not your budget, and I-
I don't care. It's, I am the chairman, you will, if I wanna talk, I'm gonna talk. So, so your question was regarding where we were, and this is for everyone's benefit. Before we had a health, when we were with WPS, um, we had, our, I'll, I'll just use our premium rates. So in two thousand nineteen, our family plan was twenty-six sixty-one, I'm gonna leave the change off it for simplicity. In two thousand twenty, the family plan was twenty-seven fifty-four. Two thousand twenty-one was twenty-nine forty-seven. Twenty-twenty-two, our last year with WPS, the premium for our family plan was three thousand sixty-two dollars. The next year, we switched to UMR, and the idea was- Uh, that was two thousand twenty-three, so, yes, last year. Um, so two thousand twenty-three, we switched to UMR, and the plan was, we thought we'd get a significant savings. But as we went through the places that we were quoting, including the state plan, because WPS would not write, would not submit the data that we needed to, um, show what our experience was over time, um, WPS, um, because WPS wouldn't do it, UMR and everyone else that we bid or put the project through, um, essentially said the best we'll do, which was UMR, will match their price. Now, mind you, we, we, our, our renewal date used to be July first to July first. So kind of pick, remember like, we'd start this budget and we knew what the price was until like July of next year. And then July would come around and we would get an increase and we would, um, make that adjustment, but we'd kind of budget, kind of guess on where our increases were. So throughout the years, if you looked, I'm guessing the increases without doing math on TV here, were about four percent a year-ish, right around there with WPS. So not, not, not big swings, manageable. However, the first year with W, with UMR, the premium, now, mind you, WPS in two thousand twenty-two, the premium was three thousand sixty-two dollars. UMR said, we'll match the plan and we'll match the price. So their family plan was three thousand and thirty-seven dollars, so a little bit cheaper, but that's from January to January versus the two thousand twenty-two price from WPS was only that price until the next July, and then it would have gone up something. I, and we don't know what, uh, but I, I can, I would bet my, my firstborn that it was gonna go up at least one percent, let's say. Now, we also, for, for clarity's sake, we, in two thousand twenty-three was the first year that we hired the healthcare consultant. So we paid around twenty-five thousand dollars for the healthcare consultant. UMR went through the first year and realized, yeah, you're right, you were paying too much, and we're gonna give you a ten percent increase, decrease. So two thousand twenty-four, for the same policy that we were having with the WPS in two thousand twenty-two, our premium went down to twenty-seven thirty-three. And then this, that's the current year we're in. Now, next year they're proposing an eight point five percent. So the two thousand twenty-five family premium will be twenty-nine sixty-six, which compared to the two thousand twenty-one WPS is twenty-nine forty-seven. So essentially, we're paying twenty, twenty-one rates in two thousand twenty-five. And I directly attribute that to having the expertise of the consultant. So on top of these prices, yes, we have an additional roughly twenty-five thousand dollars a year. But their expertise on allowing us, and first of all, realizing that we were overpaying, two, finding a, a place for us to land, and three, if we really want to do anything with our healthcare moving forward fundamentally, we will need a consultant. We're gonna need someone that has the expertise and, um, uh, in, in contrast to what Alderman Schrader is saying, HR directors, at least in the public sector, typically do not, they, they manage the healthcare plan. They don't go out and build plans. Every, every community around us that I have called uses a healthcare consultant with the exception of ones that are on a state plan, because it makes no sense to, because the plan is the plan and it's what it is. There's, there's no negotiating, there's no changing, it's, it's set, it's set rates. So that, that's the long-winded version of what I put in that memo last week.
Thank you. Um, can I just go back to Sharon? Before you could finish talking about what Rick just talked about, again, I feel like there's some discrepancy and you had mentioned that things are cheaper. It's kind of like when you first joint, go move over to Spectrum, the first year they give you a deal and then they sock you with higher rates after the first year, things, you know, you get these introductory rates and then it's not really the reality.
Yeah, that, that was our experience years ago. We did, um, have a benefit consultant, and the rates were escalating. Um, and I think it was Mayor Johnson who brought it back in-house, and our history is fairly good. We had a couple of years of zero increases, one percent increases. And I think what you're gonna find in the next year or two, you're gonna have double-digit increases because the first year, they typically drop the rates down significantly, which, you know, you experience with other, um, contracted services. So, I mean, you know, this is your decision, I, my recommendation is to do it in-house, but this is your budget. Um, all I can speak to is the experience that we had.
And I'll just chime in, I think every, every colleague that I've spoken to has indicated that their renewal this year is coming in double digits. So just market-wise, I think that that's a data point that's important to this conversation as well.
If I-
Alderman.
I, I would think, I know when I was with Spectrum, every time my price went up, I called them and negotiated. And I think that's why we need somebody, so they do negotiate every year. I seem to recall when we were looking at insurance one year, we could have saved eight hundred thousand dollars if we would have had the, the numbers that we didn't have access to.
That wasn't correct.
I think that's-
I don't remember eight hundred thousand, but if we would have had the numbers, we would have had a lot more options.
And, and we did, we did budget, I was directed to reduce the health insurance, I believe in twenty-three for an anticipated six hundred thousand, which never materialized, so we, that is why our budget to budget, there's a, a significant increase. And again, when Jenny and I were handling the health insurance, other communities were getting double-digit increases and we kept it always under five percent, if not lower, and they were all using consultants.
Yeah, and I can argue that you were paying five, you were only getting five percent increases because we were overpaying to start with. Alderman Hamel.
If we self-insure with the school, and maybe this is a stupid question, does it even matter in regards to the healthcare insurance?
We would need someone to evaluate it to make sure it's gonna work before you jump in. Self-insurance can be very risky, and you want to make sure before you jump that ship that you have safeguards put in place, that the projections are proper. There, there's, there's a lot of research and, and analytics that go behind the scenes on that before you decide, besides, besides looking at, oh, well, their rate's seventeen hundred dollars for a family plan, that's gonna save us money. It saves you money, but, you know, maybe their plan should have been thirty-seven hundred dollars because that, that, the insurance payouts come from us now.
And I guess it would probably be beneficial for us to have our own, instead of just relying on what the school is, the school district would be telling us?
I would think you'd want somebody looking out for your own, your own best interest, yes. Once you get into that plan, then we could look at doing one, you know, jointly, but in the meantime, till you create that marriage, I would highly suggest having it, someone or a firm, it's not a person, that does this day in and day out, and that's all they do. Alderman, uh, Deckard, oh, Alderman.
I've worked with companies, large and small, I owned my own business for ten years, I always use a consultant, they always save me money. This consultant has saved us money in the past. Um, Sharon, I don't know what happened in, in, when you guys were managing it. I, I have nothing to compare it to, I'm comparing it to today's market, especially if we're looking at making a change, um, in, in our insurance program. We have to have a consultant to help, help us manage that, that change.
I mean, if you, I, really, there's, there's only two areas of our budget that we're gonna come up with some really significant numbers of savings. And this is one of them, and if we're gonna do that, we need somebody that can do that. And that, I mean, Kate could, Kate could try and probably do a very good job, she's very talented, but this is a specialized line of work that HR directors don't do this part of it, they don't.
Well, I, I beg to differ on that, so.
You're entitled to disagree, that's fine.
And we, at the COW, um, I believe you even brought this up as, when you were talking about about fifty thousand dollars of savings that you could find in the budget. That was the first thing that you went to, was this consultant.
Correct, yes. If, if you want me to come through and make, go through this budget with a hatchet, instead of a scalpel, yes, I can go through and, and do a bunch of things. But I don't think they're in the best interest of the city long-term.
Well, with all due respect, again, this, you're, this isn't your budget anymore, and-
I still get to participate though.
And-
Alderman, Alderman Kabaki.
I wasn't finished.
No, you weren't recognized, so Alderman Kabaki.
If this expedition is done, I want my leaves picked up. I want our computers to be safe, I want them to be functional, I want the city to grow. I want, I don't want kids sitting in hallways in backpacks because it's raining outside. I want affordable insurance for our staff, and I'd like to see this budget approved, the way it stands.
Alderman Wolf.
I guess, uh, the biggest elephant in the room that had not been discussed, and probably the least popular, is salaries. Labor is the, uh, the biggest elephant, so-
Are we done with Kate right now, or do you want her still standing up here?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, you can have some-
I'm done. I, I guess, you can answer this question. We, we did a consultant in twenty-four and we're doing one in twenty-five, right?
Correct.
So, there's, okay, twenty-five thousand each year, whatever, okay, I just want to make sure I was looking at that right. We have a proposal in the budget of, uh, I, I, I don't know, paraphrase it, January first of two percent and mid-year at two percent?
So, no, so the proposal to kind of ease our way into it was two percent on July, and I, I mean, sorry, April first.
April first.
After the first quarter, and then another two percent at the beginning of the fourth quarter, which is October first. So by doing that-
April and October?
It still gets our employees to their, um, um, you know, to a four percent increase. It gives them less money throughout the year, once they get, they get there, versus giving them four percent and collecting that four percent for the full year. They're at least, they're getting a raise, they're being recognized for the hard work they do, but it's a way for us to ease our way into it.
Yeah, no, I understand that, and this is, these are all tough decisions and things we gotta look at. And I did bring this up in the last meeting, that in the past, we've done different things, uh, and including a one-time bonus versus a increase, which would lead us into next year's budget, uh, which I'm calling for a three hundred thousand dollar deficit to start. So something we haven't talked about is, we're looking at April at two percent, I, I looked the figures up, it seems to be around three point six percent is the average raise. We're gonna go four percent. I, I'd like to split this somehow to do a two percent and, uh, maybe a two percent bonus in October or a one percent increase and a one percent bonus, but I, I, I'd like to see a, a two percent in April and a two percent bonus in October.
Do we, do we know what kind of savings that would?
Well, it would save you two percent next year.
In, in the meantime, Chief, do you want to have something to say on that?
Yeah, I'm gonna caution you on that from a recommendation, from a public safety standpoint, we're already tied in.
Can I ask you a question though? Are you contracted for your raises? So this would pertain to you?
He's not.
The union is contracted to their, their raises, and it's already approved for, through next year on a two and two.
This would affect them?
It's not going to impact them, but it's gonna impact the supervisors, and when I'm gonna go by that specifically- And when I'm gonna go by that specifically, already selling, changing it to April and October is you're solving the budget shortfall on the backs of the employees.
Yeah, I saw that. $181,000.
With that, and that's going to also increase our compression issues at the police department. I already have issues of like the, the union members don't want to apply for positions of greater responsibility because sometimes it's less money, it's harder hours, it's different.
I think that's a police department problem across the nation.
Correct. And I would just caution you when you're moving around bonuses and, and wages.
No, I agree. I agree. It's an elephant in the room and, and somebody has to bring up some ideas, doesn't mean I have to always be the good guy. Just ideas. So, I appreciate your input. I mean, I appreciate everybody's input and I don't want to, I don't want to take anything away from it, if it's a benefit of insurance or a benefit of a raise or whatever, but at the same time, I don't know how we, you know, there's reasons we're, we're at this point where we're moving funds over that I was lectured on not to do a couple of years ago and now we want to do that. And, and I'm gonna go back to that in the budget that I can't approve this budget because of what I was educated on, that we're, we want to change that education to be in the favor of what I was told shouldn't be. So, I have to come up with some crazy ideas, you know?
Yeah, and I will argue that your mission, vision and values of the Muskego Police Department and the City of Muskego, when we do these things, the number one thing that you say is our resources, our human capital and the people that work here. So, just be careful of what the long-term impacts are. Our officers are in the bottom third in terms of comparables with the neighboring communities and it's gonna become increasingly hard to stay competitive. And I know I want to stay competitive with everybody else.
Sure, no, I understand. I agree with you. I agree with you 100%. I'm just throwing ideas out there.
Thank you, Alderman. Questions for me? You guys were easy on me, page 17.
You, you moved everything to capital.
You saw that? Good.
So, where are we at?
I, oh, I'm sorry. I had one other item and I'm trying to look for the page. Can I have the floor?
You do.
Is that okay? Okay. And I know we talked about this before and I think Bob, you were gonna get back to us and I see Karen is here, but there was some discussion about senior taxi and whether we needed, they needed us to get their funding or, or grants or something along those lines. I did Google it and it doesn't appear that that's the case, but again, this is something I just wanted to look at because I know we did have this discussion and we're trying to tighten our budget. And I love the senior taxi. I donate to the senior taxi. I go to their fundraiser. I think it's a wonderful service, but I do know they get funding from the county and other sources and I'm just wondering if that's something that we could just move away from doing.
You say Bob?
Yeah, Bob, I actually...
That's what we're talking about.
Oh, well, it was on the...
For Karen.
Yeah, it was on the Cow that you were gonna be talking to her and I...
So, we can have Karen come up, but while she's doing that, I did call her and ask her the question on that to see if, for like some of her grants do that she needs specifically to have a contribution from the municipality. The, the answer to that is not necessarily from the municipality, but she does, they do need to have community, matching community monies put into it. Am I wording that right? Karen?
Yes. The, the way that, that it's explained by the DOT is that local match helps ensure local commitment, promote long-term vision and support transportation initiatives. And therefore, we, we appreciate your contribution because it allows us the opportunity to multiply those dollars and bring it back to the community. So, for example, we learned this week that we're getting a $6,000 grant from the Waukesha County Community Foundation. And part of their questioning on the grant application is what other funding sources do you have? And the same is true with the DOT where it's a combination of cash and also in-kind assistance and together they put together your grant opportunity. And we also have smaller opportunities like the Thrive and Action Teams where again, they ask you to present an action, which in our case would be a volunteer driver program. And we ask for something specific for it and like we need assistance with fuel and they will give us $250 if we can complete that purchase. So, it's always a combination of funding that you have assured and then the grant request that you put in. And so, that $10,000 is multiplied every time that we apply for a grant. And so, it, with the DOT, it really turns into tens of thousands of dollars that come back to Muskego to serve our seniors.
So, I guess I'm confused. Does that mean the $10,000 has to come from the city?
It, it asks for community support and the city has been that foundation for the last 15 years. And so, we hope that we will be able to continue to do that to serve the seniors. There are, the seniors and those with disabilities make up about 20% of our community and it's a way to serve them.
Is there another local source that you get funding like, well, if you wouldn't have to, I'm just saying, like you said, we're, our budget's tight and I'm, you could see me, I'm going everywhere, Karen, and it's not the impression...
Sure.
I love the senior taxi. It's amazing.
Absolutely.
Service, but I am just trying to...
We take our seniors to medical appointments, grocery stores, pharmacies and the young adults. We take them to work at Pick 'n Save and Goodwill because in addition to seniors, we serve adults with disabilities, just for some of you that maybe aren't that familiar. And so, they're looking for budgeted dollars. We try a lot of different places all year long and we do hold fundraisers, but they were looking for like that guaranteed dollar figure.
So, you don't have any other guaranteed sources, is what you're telling me?
Actually, no. We request every year, we have repeat donors, but this is the one that is budgeted for us.
And you don't get county money?
We get reimbursement and that number isn't guaranteed either. It's every year, what they offer changes.
Okay. Again, like I said, when I looked it up, my understanding is it doesn't have to be from the municipality, like it can be from outside sources.
It can be, right, right.
So, you're saying after 15 years, we're the only source that you have that's...
That's budgeted. Well, we've partnered with the city to bring this service to the community and we really appreciate that because the, the police does our background checks for the, for the drivers who are amazing. They have to be safe and sound and, and they're compassionate and individuals and, and those volunteers provide the in-kind portion that also contributes to the, the funds that the, the federal government will give us.
Alderman Hamel, did you have a question?
I do, just a, I guess kind of a quick one, because Deb was going off in regards to source of funding. I think, I want to rephrase it, it's like, are we the only guaranteed source of funding that you get each year? Because you guys have other sources such as your grants, your, your, I think in Oktoberfest and your golf outing as well, but we are the only...
Fundraisers.
Yeah, fundraisers, but outside of guaranteed...
Yes.
Funding, the city is the only one.
Yep, so I need that for the applications for the grants.
Okay, like I said, just to clarify, I love the senior taxi, but I'm...
Thank you.
challenged with a horrible budget and now I'm supposed to put my name on it, so I'm trying to be a good steward of my constituents' money.
I understand. Thank you.
Alderman Kabaki.
I'd like to make, I would like to make a motion to approve the budget as it stands with the proviso that the mayor take a look at our health insurance situation and see if there's any savings in that area.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion.
I came up with several things to remove from this budget, so I'd like to amend that motion, I guess. Is that what I would do?
You would make a motion, yeah.
At this point? Okay, I'd like to motion to amend that budget and remove, you want exact amounts?
Yeah, we'll need the, the areas and the amounts, yes, please.
Removing $10,000 from IT consulting.
Just, can I pause this for, I just want to make sure, does, do you know what she's saying when she says that? Okay.
Removing $5,000 from the audit 14, I think it was, finance, page 14. Some of these I have pages.
Yep.
Removing $15,000 from page 14, landscape, 5820 was the number. Removing 20,000...
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, just the landscaping 15K, okay.
Removing 20,000 from the TRF on page 26, the...
The uncompensated absences?
Correct.
Okay.
Page 19, again, it's a contracted service that was where Sharon stepped in and said something about moving over the...
Refuge?
The refuge, taking 10K off of that.
Off of the, that was leaf collection?
Mm-hmm.
Mayor, one question.
Can we let her make her motion first and then we can... Go on.
Page 24, taking the $15,000 from the rec department or what we discussed for them, I guess a rental or whatever that was.
So, we're removing the rental fees that we have in there?
Removing them.
Okay.
Correct. And using alternative ideas. I'll leave it at that. And page 13, removing 2,006, uh, 26,550 for, for the benefits consultant. Contracted services from HR. And I, I hate to do this, but I'm just gonna put it in there and removing the senior taxi because I feel, and that's 10,000, I think we had it budgeted for this year, but I just feel like after 15 years, it's a great service and I don't want it to go away, but I, again, I'm, I don't see other community services that we're supporting like that. And I think the intention was to help them start up and it's been 15 years and I just feel there's probably gonna be someone in the community that could step up and I know I help where I can with that and I know a lot of people that care deeply about the senior taxi and I think that they'll be fine.
Anything more adding to your motion or is that it?
No, those were the amounts, yes, thank you.
Is there a second for that? For all the items she listed to remove?
Oh, I'll second it.
Discussion. Any discussion on this?
I agree, I agree with everything she's...
All right.
I'm sorry. I agree with everything she said, except I would like to restore the senior taxi and restore the benefit consultant.
They make a motion to amend.
Wait, he made a motion, so you're making a motion to amend the amendment, yes.
Yeah.
So, so for, for, just for clarity's sake, I believe that's as far as we can go on amendments to amendments. So, you're making a motion to restore the senior taxi and the healthcare, right?
Yes.
Is there a second to that, motion to amend the amendment?
I'll second it.
You still need to say something or?
Yeah.
Well, the motion's still on the floor, isn't it?
Well, it's on the floor for discussion, so...
Okay.
You, yes, come up.
I just wanted to be clear on the contracted services that you want to cut. We're, we're cutting it, but we're moving, right? The whole count, in the whole account in general?
The funds are yours. It's just gonna come out of refuse recycling, special revenue fund versus the operating.
Just the leaf collection portion or everything I have to do for contracted services?
No, just, just anything that's a leaf.
Leaf collection.
And that was 20?
Roughly, yeah, $20,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it was 30 and it's going to 20? Is that right?
If it was 30, it would be going down to 10.
10.
Or it was 20 and it's going down to 10?
Well, no, we're removing 20, are we removing 20,000 worth?
Removing 20...
That's a TRF?
No, that, this is the land, I thought it was 15K actually, wasn't it?
Contracted services under DPW, Public Works Services.
Page 19, 50, 20.
How much is it? Just tell me how much it is.
It's, it's 30 right now that they're asking for and I might have misspoke because I said 10, but it, 20, it'd be back down to 10 and then...
So, that would give me $10,000 to use for contracted services for Public Works and $20,000 for leaf collection expenditures and refuse and recycling.
So, it's still $30,000, you're just...
Correct. We're just moving money into...
You're just getting a different revenue source.
Correct. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay, I, I thought it was 30, that's why I had 10 written down.
Thank you.
I was not, I was confused, okay.
All right. So, the motion to, you, you had a motion to amend the amendment and you got a second to the motion to amend the amendment by Alderman Wolf. Discussion on the motion to amend the amendment essentially which is storing in the senior taxi and the healthcare consultant back into the mix.
I just think if we take out the IT consulting, it's dangerous.
We, we, we talked about that, didn't, what, what did you say about that now? Refresh our memory, please. Sorry to interrupt.
Good time.
Just trying to get this together here.
Yeah, the IT consulting budget covers all the consulting for the city as far as any networking, firewall, security cameras, electrician, if I have to do something in my server rooms or my data rooms. For like the, excuse me, the disaster recovery we did at the school district, I had help with that to configure all that and make sure that the backups were working offsite. Some years I spend all of it and some years I don't. It's based on the capital projects and what comes up during the year. So, it's, it moves.
And then as far as what you did with the, can I speak?
Yes.
As far as what you did with all the computer, all the stuff that I went through, you, you, you're rationing it out across the whole board, so there actually might be some money left out of that.
Correct.
Okay. I just, I just want to clarify that if that's the case.
Any other questions for Barb? All right. Is there any?
Oh, well, I just, because I did ask you at the end of that if...
Yeah, and you can, you can take it, it's...
Okay.
I mean, I would like you not to, but if you want to...
Well, nobody wants to cut their budgets. I get it. I get it.
We'll, we'll make do with what we have.
Right. Thank you.
And if I need more, I'll come back.
Yep, we know, we know.
Does any of the other department heads that have their stuff listed here have anything to add to the council before the, this discussion starts? So, all right. Any further discussion on the motion to amend the amendment? That's nice opinion. That's okay. Yes, sir.
Did we take out the, um, the consultant for IT?
Yes, that's, that's taken out right now.
Partial.
Partial, yes.
Just a part of it.
Reduction, it's a reduction.
Just a reduction.
Okay.
I, I asked for a reduction in IT and a...
You have a list of what this is. Let's just read back the list.
Okay, you want me to reread it?
No, I'll have the clerk do it.
So, this is what you're voting, right?
The motion, well, list the items.
And then we'll take what we took off.
Correct.
Deb asked for a reduction, 10,000 IT consulting, 5,000 for the audit and finance, 15,000 for landscape, 20,000 uncompensated absences?
Mm-hmm.
10,000 leaf collection. So, and that should actually be...
Oh, that's 20.
20. 20, is it?
It's 20.
It's 20. So, 20,000 leaf collection, 15,000 rec department for the rental fees, 26,150 for benefit consultant.
550.
550 and 10,000 for senior taxi.
Correct. And then the motion to amend brought back in the healthcare consultant and the senior taxi. Okay? Are we on the same page, everyone?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Further discussion on this?
I still think we should bring back the ten thousand for IT.
Um, well, you gotta wait for this one. You can't, you can't make another.
I, I do not, again, I, both these things that Dennis is bringing back in, I, I'm sorry, but senior taxi is not a service that we need to offer, although it's a great service. I do not feel that the city, I mean, not all the constituents have voted and want to necessarily have their money going to the senior taxi. I feel that's something we can eliminate after fifteen years. And the benefit consultant, again, I don't see the value there, and I, I, I think for years it's been done in-house, and now, and they tried it out house, out, out house, out of house, years passed according to Sharon, and then they brought it back in, and I, I feel like we're, uh, I don't wanna say throwing good money after bad, but I feel like that is something that HR should be handling, and I'm, I'm pretty adamant about that. That's a, that's an, I, every HR person that I've talked to, um, deals with the benefits like that.
All, Jake?
Yeah, I just wanna touch on the benefit consulting. Keep in mind, we have a department of one. She does a lot. Um, I think taking that out of the budget would not be wise of us for the long-term savings. Yes, we've gone back and forth about different numbers, but we can have more savings potentially year over year. Only time will tell. Maybe next year we take it out if we're not seeing it, but right now, we saw it after that one year.
Further discussion?
Again, I-
Wait, so Steve, somebody else, does anyone else want to talk? Oh, yes, Alderman Decker.
I, I have seen the ben- the benefits of, um, of benefit consultants in, in previous work that I've done. Uh, I think, I think they do pay for themselves, and I think, um, I think it's, the nature of that work is too much for one person.
Thank you. Alderman Schrader?
Um, again, I, I feel like there's some discrepancy in what it actually saved us, and for what we're paying, I don't feel like it, we're realizing a savings like you think we are. And that's, again, she is a department of one, but this is not a huge municipality. This is not a rocket science, making calls and comparing things. I do it as a single mom. I'm the head of household. I compare things every year on my insurances for auto, health, you know, home, life, all of them. It's not rocket science. It really isn't. It's, it's called negotiating.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, and the motion to amend the amend, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call vote.
Elder Person Wolfe?
Aye.
Elder Person Hamel?
Aye.
Elder Person Decker?
Aye.
Elder Person Schwer?
No.
Elder Person Schrader?
No.
Elder Person Kabaki?
Aye.
You can reconsider, thanks.
Elder Person Madden?
Aye.
Okay. Does Jake?
Okay, reconsider, yes.
Is that okay to him to do that?
Is he, did you, are you?
He, he has to reconsider.
Yeah.
If you think about what you're telling, you're changing your mind, that's fine.
Yeah, that's right.
He has to reconsider, right?
No, it's not a reconsider, it's, he's just spoken about.
Yes. So, he's an aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, six to one.
All right. Six to one, the motion now is, as amended, is for the-
Was it six to one?
Yes, six to one, and so the, the motion to amend was approved. The, now you have a amendment on the floor for all the items that we had, that Alderman Schrader had brought up, with the exception of the healthcare consultant and the senior taxi.
So, now we're voting on that.
So, now we're voting on the motion to amend that, so. Alderman Kabaki?
I thought we just voted.
You voted on the motion?
The same thing.
No, you, you, you voted on the motion to, to pull, so there was a motion to list a bunch of stuff, then there was an amendment by Alderman, Alderman Decker to pull those two out.
Now, we're doing his.
So, essentially, we're, we're voting on his, yes.
So, what's left is about eighty thousand dollars, twenty of which is coming from a different pocket. So, now we're down to sixty thousand dollars in an eighteen million, I'm just trying to get a perspective. Sixty thousand, eighteen million dollar budget, and we've wasted all this time screwing around with this that this is, this is silly. It's absolutely silly.
Well, with all, with all due respect, that's eighty thousand dollars of our community's citizens' money. So, I'm sorry, it's wasting your time, Kevin. That's too bad, but this is our people's-
Please address it to the chair. Thank you.
This is our people's money, and we're, he can talk about the eighteen million or whatever, but we're two or three thousand dollars. This budget is off, really. I mean, yeah, it's balanced, but it's doing things that it shouldn't be doing to balance. And I'm trying to pick a way at getting us out of that, because we're gonna start off in the hole next year. I guess you're fine with that, Kevin? I'm not.
Alderman Hamel?
Yeah, I just got a few comments, um. A budget is just a good guesstimate. Things could come in higher, they could come in lower. You know, we could, instead of cutting stuff, you know, we just showed, you know, we received increased investment income. I believe that was discussed earlier tonight. We could increase our revenues with additional investment income to, for that. I know, and this, this isn't a smart thing to do, but there is a surrounding community each year that takes a million dollars out of their general fund budget each and every year. I know it's not a good thing to do. I think this is a reasonable budget. And, and, you know, like I said, we, we could increase our revenue to make it in line and not take anything from a one-time funding source. We don't know what the investments are gonna be. Right now, you know, yields are going up on the treasury bond. Everybody thought they had dropped. Most people are wrong. They're, they've gone up a half a percent, if not more. Um, close to three quarters of a percent. You know, I just, you know, I, I kinda feel the way what Kevin does on this. It's, it is a reasonable budget, and I think there's other things that, you know, we could increase our revenue sources. We don't know what all the numbers are gonna come into. And that's all I got.
Anyone else? Alderman Madden?
I, you know, I, I see we wanna take fifteen thousand away from rec, but we don't know where we're gonna put those kids, and I understand you don't agree with where everybody's gonna go on how they do that, but I have to depend on Tammy knows what she's talking about. The ten thousand dollars taken away from IT, we're talking about disaster recovery and networking. This is big stuff. This isn't something you can just say, hey, Jake, come on, give it a shot, see what you can do. I think the budget needs to sit the way it is right now. I mean, we move them around every year. We move stuff around when something special comes up. We've always had stuff we didn't spend, and there've been times when something drastic comes up that we have to move things around. It's a basic budget, and I think we need to approve it the way it was written.
Um, wait, just, I'll give you the second, just, is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet that wants to talk? All right, thank you.
Um, again, I, even Barb, and if there is a emergency or something, that they're gonna ask for it. I mean, we are reasonable people. Again, we're just looking for, and I know Tammy, I've worked with Tammy over the years as far as this fifteen thousand goes. Again, I don't think she should have been relying on the police department. I understand she was, but I don't think that's appropriate place for our kids. I'm, I'm a hundred percent- What's that?
No, 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 let her finish talking, and then you can get ready.
Um, I, I don't feel like everybody tightening their belts a little bit and finding eighty thousand dollars to, or finding this eighty thousand, and it could have been more, but people are, you know, wanting things back in. It could have been over a hundred thousand. It could have really offset some of the problems that we're having with this budget. And I really feel like everybody needs to dig deeper, because we are not, we're spending other people's money. We're not, it's not your money. It's not our money. It's our, our constituents' money, and we need to be good stewards of that, and it's really disappointing to me that this seems like it's a waste of your time, Kevin. I don't know. I'm, I'm just very frustrated right now. I'm sorry.
Alderman Wolfe?
I guess what I got to say is, is when I ran to be an alderman, um, I, I, I made a few statements alter, and, and one was, I, I'm not gonna be a rubber stamp. So, take that for what it is. Um, I'm not happy with this budget. And, and the people are telling me that it's a waste of time, and told me that we shouldn't do things or doing what I wanted to do a few years ago that I was told not to do. But now it's fine because it's what you wanna do. So, maybe there's a different waste of time going on here. But I'm not a rubber stamp. I will not be one. I will say what I wanna say. I'll bring up the unpopular things as well as the popular things, and that's what I'm elected for. And, uh, you know, I've said this in the past too, my, my job, and again, unpopular statements, is not to make the city's life easy. I'm not here to make things easy. I'm here to make hard choices. And, you know, I'm, I'm not happy with this operational side of, of the budget at all, and I have questions on, on the capital, so I'm just waiting my turn for that.
Anyone else? So, the one thing I will- Yeah, but the one thing, the one thing I'll just add on to this, um, is, I understand, I, I, I understand where your heart is on this. I, I can respect that. And I understand Alderman Wolfe on, you know, this is not a, a budget that I don't think anyone up here ideally likes. No one likes it, and, and, and just for clarification, no one would ever accuse you of being a rubber stamp or not, what's saying on your mind. It's, it's, it's who you are, we respect that. You know, so I, I, I get that. At the end of the day, you know, we're, we're, we're unfortunately relying on one-time fund sources on the front end of this thing, but I wanna remind you that because of our department heads and how dedicated they are and how close they do watch their budgets, after, year after year after year, every year, we return roughly two hundred, on, at least two hundred thousand dollars back into fund balance. So, I mean, more than likely, we're not going, most likely, we're not gonna touch the unfunded, the, the one-time funding sources anyway. Does create a problem next year for the budget, and hopefully we can take care of that with, you know, some adjustments to healthcare, but i- i- in the end, we're not, it's, whatever you guys decide here today is not gonna change the tax rate. The tax rate is gonna be three dollars and eighty-two cents. What? Right. I mean, so, it's, it's three dollars, you know, it's, it's your three dollars, so it's not spending anyone else's more money or not money. All the, all the funds are the taxpayers' funds, and we gotta respect that, and I understand that. But, you know, we're, we're left, we're left in these situations by choices that were made by people, well, one person in the room, um, that has a say in this, and we don't. We're, we're, we're under these guns, and until the state changes how we fund local government, we're, we're doing something today for the first, I can't say the first time, because we've used one-time funding sources in, in the past, but, um, what we're doing today, and what's, it's probably gonna be more, it's gonna, might be an ongoing occurrence, is happening every community across the state, because local government is broken, unfortunately. So, um, I just wanted to say that, um, so.
Again, if I could have the floor for one more comment, with all due respect, this is not the mayor's budget anymore. This is all of our budgets, so we are responsible for this budget now, because when this budget passes, Rick will say, you passed it, it's your budget. So, he's washing his hands of it now, and now it's our budget. So, keep that in mind, folks, when you're voting. This is our budget now. And I tried to do everything that I could to help with the deficit. And all I can say is it's disappointing that I don't have my colleagues on the same page with me for my, for our constituents right now.
All right, so we're still voting on just the amendment? Can we get that out of the way or not?
Real quick comment. I do appreciate, and I said it before, I appreciate everybody's hard work. I mean, this is, this is a pretty lean budget. It, it, it's just, I got a couple of issues that are stuck with me personally, um, and I think it reflects into the taxpayers, but I appreciate everybody's hard work. The budget is a tough budget, and that's all I gotta say.
All right. Roll call vote.
You know what you're voting on?
Yeah.
Denny's?
What is a yes vote?
Essentially, Denny's amendment is what you're voting on.
On the amendment.
On the amendment, yes, correct.
A yes vote means you're passing the budget with Alderman Schrader's change.
No, you're voting on just the amendment right now.
Oh, you're voting on the change?
We're doing-
Oh, wait a minute, now you're confusing us.
It's almost like you're voting on the same thing twice, I, because he, he made a motion to, he amended a motion.
So, we're gonna take out the two items?
First we had, first we had to vote on his amendment to the amendment, so we did that, that's on the floor. So, now we're on the floor of essentially voting on the same thing, except that's what it is right now, so.
Now, it's the motion.
It's essentially the same thing you just voted on.
No, we're gonna do what Deb did minus the two things.
Correct.
Which Denny requested.
Right.
Okay.
And there could have been a cleaner way to do it, maybe, but-
The benefit consultant and the-
Just for clarification, we're voting on Deb's amendment with any stuff added back in.
You will still have one more vote after this on the motion to approve the-
Budget.
The budget with this amendment. Okay? So, now you're just voting on the amendment?
Which one?
The amount that Deb-
If you like the last one, it's a staple.
The one that Deb, Deb's amendment with Denny's stuff added back in.
Correct.
That's what I asked, yep, thanks.
Elder Person Wolfe?
Yes.
Elder Person Hamel?
No.
Elder Person Decker?
Yes.
Elder Person Schwer?
No.
Elder Person Schrader?
Yes.
Elder Person Kabaki?
No.
Elder Person Madden?
No.
So, the, the motion to amend fails. So, now we have a- All right. You, you, you've, you voted to, um, her, the amendment of, you, you voted to amend the mo- Kevin's motion. Kevin's original motion was to pass the budget as is. The thing you just voted on now was to take out these one, two, three, four, five, six, six items. That failed. So, now we have on the floor of the motion to approve the budget as submitted. Does that make sense to everyone? So, so you're-
I think that's right.
Why, why is it not?
Because, oh my God, never mind, I'm too tired for this one day.
It is. So, so, explain. It is. So, so explain. So we had, we had a motion from Kevin that said, let's approve the budget as is. Deb made a motion to amend it. You then amended her motion, your amendment to motion, to make her motion passed. But then, but now you have to vote on the motion as amended, which failed. So now we're back to Kevin's original motion. All right?
So my question is, all this that Deb put together all failed?
Is off the table right now.
So.
We're left with the motion, we're left with the motion as made by Kevin, by Alderman Kabaki.
So then the one he amended failed?
It's gone now.
And I voted.
Had a brief life.
I voted yes, which means I didn't want that?
No, you wanted, you wanted that. You voted the way I think you wanted to do.
Because I wanted to keep, like the senior taxi in, for instance. I wanted, so I voted yes. Okay, then I did that, right?
But it failed.
But it failed. So now we're back to Kevin's.
So now we're back to voting.
Sure. So, so just to be clear, here's where the motion is right now. The motion by Alderman Kabaki was to approve the 2025 budget as submitted. Well. As submitted, yes. All right. Correct.
And everything we talked about.
Does everyone understand what we're voting on before we?
And it can't be amended. It has to.
We can amend it again.
Okay. Okay.
Calls for the question. Well, wait, she's, she's possibly making a motion to amend.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to amend and take out a few, I would like to amend the motion and take out the, the.
When you say take out, you're.
Remove.
From the budget.
From the budget. As we discussed, the audit 14, the 5K from finance, the page 14, the landscape 15K, 5820, that was another consultant fee, the page 26, the TRF abs funds for 20. And the, doing the amendment with what Sharon talked about, moving the leave service.
20,000. The 20,000.
The 20,000. What was my first one? I'm sorry. That was the audit?
Audit.
Yep.
Essentially, this puts back in the consulting.
And removing the.
Rec.
Benefits consultant for 26,550.
You want to add that back in again?
No, I'm taking it out.
You take, meaning you want it gone from the budget?
Yes, I want it gone from the budget.
All right.
So it's not the same motion. I'm taking out.
It's not the same.
It's not the same.
So it's essentially her first motion with the exception of the IT consultant and the senior taxi.
And the rec. And the rec department.
Oh, and the rec, yes. Sorry. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion to amend. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
You know what you're voting on?
Alder Person Wolf.
So this is.
Just clarify it again. What is?
This takes out of the budget, the healthcare consultant. The leaf pickup gets transferred over to Refuge, which is 20,000. The 20,000 in uncompensated absences will be removed. 15,000 from a landscaping contract and $5,000 from an audit.
A yes vote takes that out.
A yes vote removes the healthcare consultant and all those other things that we just listed. Okay, so.
She has changed, she has changed her amendment.
She did.
Correct. I left in the senior taxi. I left in the rec department.
But the healthcare consultant is out.
And left in, I believe, the IT.
Correct. All right. So everyone understand that?
A yes vote favors.
Yes. Back to Kevin's. Yes. All right. Roll call vote.
Alder Person Wolf.
No.
Alder Person Hamel.
No.
Alder Person Decker.
Yes.
Alder Person Schwer.
No.
Alder Person Schrader.
Yes.
Alder Person Kabaki.
No.
And Alder Person Madden.
No.
The amendment fails. So we're back to the original motion. Any further discussion? All right. Roll call vote on the motion as presented by Alderman Kabaki.
Alder Person Wolf.
No.
Hamel?
Yes.
Decker?
No.
Schwer?
Yes.
Schrader?
No.
Kabaki?
Yes.
Madden?
Yes.
Passes. All right, we're going to take a break.
Good idea.
Come back at 10:02. Hang on with the meeting. Nine o'clock almost. Next item. Resolution 062, 2024, approval of the 2025 Capitol budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Hamel.
I'd like to make an amendment to defer this to next Tuesday.
It's not a motion, it'd be a motion to defer.
Okay, motion to defer. I'm sorry.
Till next Tuesday? It's a special, it'd be a special council meeting then.
I'll miss, I'm going to be out of the country the next meeting. Next regular meeting.
So you're deferring to when you're out of town? Good idea.
I, well, I should have done that. But I didn't. So that's why I picked next Tuesday.
No one yet. Just checking my little notes here.
Don't you want to get it over?
Do you have a second? I need a second to defer that. Is there a second to defer till next Tuesday?
I'll second. Why not?
Nobody's twisting your arm, Kevin.
There's no discussion on that. So, roll call, is this going to need a roll call vote? There's no discussion.
Do it next Tuesday.
I don't think so.
I'm sorry, why were we deferring?
There's no discussion. I, I, I mean, I, you can talk, but technically, there's no discussion on that. How long, how long do you, do you figure this will take?
That's the question. You know, if the first one's three hours.
That's because I went line by line. Well, I dragged it, I dragged it out.
Yes.
I only have one thing on this.
That's all I have.
If that's helpful.
If it's, you know, three hours, you know, it's, you know, that's, that was my thinking on it. So if, you know.
So we have a motion and a second. Or if you guys are going to withdraw, do it. Otherwise, we're going to go to a vote on it.
It's going to take 15 minutes.
All right. All those in favor of the motion to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, I couldn't tell. My hearing left an hour ago.
Alder Person Wolf.
No.
Alder Person Hamel.
Yes.
Alder Person Decker.
No.
Alder Person Schwer.
Yes.
Yes.
Alder Person Schrader.
No.
Alder Person Kabaki.
Yes.
Alder Person Madden.
No.
All right.
Now we wasted a lot of time.
All right, so. Yeah, we do. We have a first and a second. We didn't get a second?
We did not get a second on the cap, the operator.
All right. So I need a second on the Capitol. Sorry. I thought you said we did have it.
No, I didn't. You told me we didn't have it.
Oh.
Okay.
See, this is why we.
Kevin made the motion.
Do we have a second for them, to bring it to the floor that we just voted on? Yeah, that's hope. It's completely out of order, and I apologize. All right. Capitol budget. Do we have any motions or discussion or?
I thought Deb said she had something.
Yeah, I, I am, I'd like to motion to, I got some paperwork to hand out. I would like to make a motion to remove the fire pumper truck, to move that off a year. I think I recall him saying at the, Jeff saying at the meeting that the truck doesn't even come in for about a year. And then I would like to use those funds to take down the police department and put in a parking. And then I'm just going to hand this out.
So while she's doing that, I did get an email just before the meeting. So just found out the, from the fire chief, that they are getting a second quote from another company on the pumper. So the other part was, yes, the truck, the order now will be a year out. But if we put it back a year, it's going to be a year out from that. So.
It'll be two years out?
If we defer to a year, it's going to be a year off whenever we approve it.
Everybody got one?
Sure.
From January 20, January 14, 2020, a meeting where it was discussed to tear down the police station. Alder Person Kabaki said people shouldn't even be inside of the building. Let's see. He was on, hang on.
Did you just point out where you're reading from?
Yeah, let me, let me just, I had a highlighted page and I don't see it here in my, unless I gave someone.
Somebody have a highlighted version?
Oh, no. Here, I got it. So, it's on the second page, number four, demolish the office building and it says leave the remaining for cold storage as needed for parking. Option would require plan council approval. I don't know if that ever went to plan council, but it's my, or plan commission, sorry. It is my understanding that you can't just have a freestanding garage. I know residents don't allow it. I don't think that would be something that we would be able to do anyway. And both Attorney Worchell and the previous mayor agreed more parking was needed. Alder Person Kabaki stated that option four, demolishing it makes sense. Certainly can't be repurposed because there's too many issues. And the consensus was to demolish the office building and maintain potentially for cold storage. Staff will do the necessary research. I don't know where any of that research is. I know Bob brought this up at the last cow, that why hasn't this been demolished? Why is it still sitting here? And I would like to, again, like I said, move the money for the pumper, put it towards demolishing and putting in a additional parking.
Alderman Hamel.
I don't know how to phrase this. So correct me if I'm wrong. Isn't the contract that we have with fire, doesn't that include their equipment for the upcoming years?
Correct. But we approve anything over, I forgot the dollar amount, but we, we have to, we have to approve their equipment. So they, they're not guaranteed their pumper this year unless you guys say they get their pumper this year. Well, they don't get to order their pumper this year.
Even if it's in their contract stating, because I thought I saw something.
Well, the contract states that, you know, they get it. However, anything over a certain dollar amount, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, maybe Sharon can help me with that, comes back to the council for their approval.
500,000.
Okay, say anything over 500,000 from their contract comes back here. This is over 500,000. So you still have to approve it.
Okay. The thing I have with tearing down the, I'm fine with getting rid of the old PD. However, we still don't know what the cost is on that.
Well, we'd have $950,000 right here towards it. I think that would be sufficient to tear it down and put in a park, additional parking that everybody agreed that we needed before I was even on council. I think this should have been done, quite frankly. You asked that question at the last.
It should have been done when we.
Why wasn't this done?
This.
Somebody dropped the ball. And I don't know where. Maybe it was from COVID. I'm not 100% sure. But it just needs to go. And I, I think with the fact that the pumper wouldn't be ready for one to four years, we, for, to pay for, we could push this off and easily take care of the PD, which I was, which, you know, we, it wasn't in the budget. There's no money for it. Well, this finds money for it.
Wait, wait, no, going back and forth. So, anyone else want to talk? Alderman Kabaki.
Yeah. Since this was written in, what, 2020, Bray Architects came in and said the building can't be refurbished. So I guess I was incorrect in that particular statement. You know, we argued for two hours about some $60,000. And now we want to spend X number of dollars that we don't even know to tear down a building. I don't get it. To me, public safety goes way ahead of destroying a building. But that's just me.
Alderman Schwer.
I don't disagree. Something has to eventually get done with the building. But now knowing that it'd be two years out if we were to put up a fire, the pumper truck, I totally agree. How do you put tearing down a building over pump, uh, public safety? And we know it's already a dated truck. It's past its life. So it's.
We're not putting it over.
Just please let everyone talk first. Anyone else? You spoke, yeah, then Alderman Schwer. Yes. Go on.
So the pumper truck has been put off for another year. Is that what I'm hearing?
No. So, well, her motion is to put it off another year. So just realize that the pumper truck, when ordered, will take at least a year. So it's not, you put it off another year, it's just waiting and it's perpetually out.
And then the order is going to take another year after that.
They're not going to build it while you decide.
So we're move, keep on moving it down the road.
Right.
Okay.
Alderman Wolf.
I'm just looking at the notes. And I asked on here how much parking is needed. So you want to put a parking lot in, how much parking is needed? That'd be a big question. I don't see why we would overdo the parking lot there. I had a concern on that back then. Still have that now. Talking about tearing down the building.
Well, I'm not.
Anyone else? Did you, Alderman Decker?
I see here that the, it says the consensus was to demolish the bill, office building. I'm assuming they're talking about the old police department and maintain the garage, the garage for cold storage. I would, I would be for that, utilizing the garage for cold storage.
I don't think we can, it's, can I have the floor? I'm not clear that it would be feasible to just keep the garage. My understanding in the real estate world is you just can't have a freestanding garage on a lot, that it has to have an office or a built, a house accompanying it. I don't know that that's different for a municipality, but in my real estate life, that's my understanding.
So we happen to have an expert in the crowd. So I'm going to phone a friend here.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
I think when we discussed all this going back in memory, I was going to paraphrase that cost was a dilemma in trying to keep, take the office part down and we'd have to put a new front on. And I think it was cheaper to tear the whole thing down. I think that was, I'll just paraphrase it like that.
All right. So, single-family residential is the only property you have to have a house before you have an outbuilding. There's plenty of parks, so any government, institutional, commercial, government, institutional, commercial, those are the main ones. Those who can have, building's a building. I mean, the storage is a primary use in a park. You can have a storage building park. We have a storage at Boxhorn right now, a perfect example with nothing else on the lot. So that's actually really common to have storage on a non-residential lot. That can be, that is your, park is your primary use, like in the case of a park. And if you happen to have storage on that park, as long as it's a city storage, they can have that. Thank you.
Okay. And then my, I guess my thought on that too is I think, and Sharon, I don't know if you can help me on this because I don't have that in front of me, but isn't cold storage on the budget in a couple of years? Like, is this storage enough? And aren't you asking for storage down the road anyway because this really isn't ideal?
Not that it.
I mean, couldn't things be moved around for a year or two?
No. Anything that's in there right now will be outside until we have a spot for it.
And before was it outside too? I mean, is this stuff, can it be outside? Is it an absolute?
Not unless you want to keep on investing in more equipment. And every equipment that myself, the PD, utilities, conservation is all stored inside.
And there's no room at any of those other buildings where?
We are plump full. That's why I keep, I put cold storage in. I think I have 400,000 in capital and a five-year projection. We keep on kicking it down and kicking it down just knowing what's going to happen with the old PD, what we're going to need in the future. Right now, Tim in his building actually stores three pieces of my equipment. I would say it would be sitting outside.
How big is this cold storage here? What do you have in it? Just out of curiosity. I've never been in it.
It's all the seasonal stuff. So during summer, it's all our leaf suckers, snowplows, one-off equipment, the PD's boat in the wintertime, conservation's boat, stuff that you would just, you'd want to keep inside and store. You wouldn't want it sitting outside, sun, rain, wind, everything else.
Okay.
Alderman Wolf.
Didn't we get rid of the storage unit on Pioneer down the road here because we didn't need it?
Oh, you're going back before my time.
That's not that long ago. We just sold that building to some landscape company or something, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the old Parks building. Is that what it was?
Yeah, they're building a new building down there.
Right by Janesville. And we got rid of it because we didn't need storage. So.
I don't know if that's why you got rid of it. I know it's gone. I have no idea.
That's why we got rid of it. Right?
Yeah. I mean, as far as cold storage, that was pretty minimal as far as maintaining and keeping it. It needed a lot of improvements. We got rid of it.
And what about the one by the boat launch by?
Boxhorn?
Yeah, Boxhorn.
So, go on.
That's, that's not used anymore either, right? It's coming, did we tear that down?
Yeah, it's coming down.
It's coming down.
Yep.
And one of the reasons that's coming down is it's not, you know, our population center and our roads are all on this side of town.
No, I know.
And we know what it's like to drive around the big lake to go get something.
And we just bought a building 10 years ago, a good-sized building in the industrial park, and that's full?
Yep. That's where utilities is located, right behind us.
Is there room on that land to expand cold storage?
Yep. Yeah, and that's, you'll see.
Can we connect on that building without building a new building?
What's that?
Can we connect to that building without building a new building?
I think we'd be better off doing a pole barn setup besides brick and mortar to keep class down, separate.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out the storage issues here. Because I remember when we had these discussions, that the storage was not a big issue, that we could pull the stuff out of there. We just, we'd find a place for it to go. But it is 2020, that's, you know, four years ago, which isn't that long ago.
Well, you probably brought more.
It seems like we need a lot more storage all of a sudden. We bought that much more equipment or?
Well, as we've been growing as a community, we've grown as departments. And then in 2015, when we acquired the Parks Department, that brought in more equipment that used to be over there is now here.
Maybe that's why we didn't, we got rid of that property because we're, I don't know.
Plus, I mean, if you look at like a lot of the equipment that I buy, the bigger purchases, the 10 to 15-year purchases, that stuff sitting outside, you're looking at five-year purchases, you know what I mean? It's more the maintenance on the equipment.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the storage units because I know we just.
Might get a call from an alderman about having stuff stored outside.
What's that?
Might get a call from an alderman about having stuff stored outside.
Well.
And the city might not do anything about it.
I, can I?
Yes.
I think we've been kicking this down the road for a long time here with this old PD. And I did really think about this a lot, and I feel like this is a great opportunity to just, and we could have a resolution coming up and do a separate resolution on the fire, the pumper truck, like we did with Park Arthur. I really feel like we need to find the money to get rid of this. It's costing us, I think, fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain it. Perhaps you could use a little bit of that towards renting a spot for a year to keep your stuff. I don't know. But I think we need to move forward with getting rid of this. It's been going on for a long time, and it looks to me, when I read through that, those minutes, that this was supposed to be acted on a long time ago. And again, I don't know where DPW or whoever planning or whoever was supposed to get back with information on getting this done, but it needs, it needs to be done. And we need additional parking, and that building is really, I think we've all come to the conclusion that it's not going to be a wrecked center and, you know, it's time to go.
Any other discussion? Alderman Wolf.
You know, the only other, I mean, I appreciate that you came up with a solution. I mean, it's not a bad idea. The only other solution I would come up with is that we have eight hundred and fifty, I can't find it. Again, just go by memory, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a splash pad coming up that.
Yeah, but that's not next, that's not this coming year.
No, but it's upcoming that we could use that for the tearing down as well.
So I don't disagree with Alderman Schrader on, you guys need to have a plan on what we're going to do on this. And last, last we talked about, it was going to come back to the committee, the whole. I know Public Works has been working with vendors, is trying to get costs and numbers and, you know, so you know what you're into it for. You know, I, you can budget this, but I really think you need to know what you're in for before you do that. We don't even, we, we don't know what's in that building or anything. I'm not arguing that, you know, something needs to be done with that building. I mean, it's from a tearing down, but if you tear it, are you going to tear the whole thing down? Are you going to follow the committee of the whole here where it just said do the front part but not the back? You know, those are all discussions you guys need to have, and that's my two cents. Alderman Madden.
Yeah, I was just going to say that we, we still have to do the research. We don't even know if we can get somebody to tear it down this year. We know that it's going to come down. We all agree it's coming down. We need to find out if we can hire anybody. We need to find out if they're going to be able to start before spring. We need to, we have a lot of answers. I don't, I'm not opposed to putting the fire truck off for a year if they're not going to get it for three or four anyway.
No, they're a year out is from what I said. And then, so whenever you, they're not making it while we're deciding. So whatever time.
So we need to.
Whatever timeframe it is, is when that time period, that clock starts.
Got it.
Alderman Wolf.
You look at 2026, they got another four hundred thousand in there. I'm assuming that's another fire truck.
Could be an ambulance at four hundred.
So basically what I'm asking is this nine hundred and fifty thousand should be plenty to tear down the old PD and put in some parking. It should be plenty. There may be even enough to build some cold storage with that money. But we can, we could do like we did with Park Arthur and get that fire pumper ordered through a resolution like we did with Park Arthur if it can't be pushed off a year. I don't want to jeopardize public safety, don't get me wrong. But I'm trying to find a way to find money to get rid of this PD and just put this to bed and get some additional parking and then potentially get your cold storage sooner than later because I know this is just a temporary fix for you anyway. You need something better, and here's our opportunity to do it smartly.
Anyone else? Alderman Schwer.
Just so I'm clear, you can make a resolution anytime throughout the year to do. So then what would be the difference? We still go forward with the pumper truck? We make a resolution for the PD or the old PD once we have a full plan of what we're going to do?
The, we try to plan our budgets, and that's why we have a five-year capital plan. So I mean, in the five-year, obviously, things can change and be added to and taken away. It's financially prudent to have a plan and have money that if we're going to do it, that it's going to have some money to back up your resolution. So, I mean, one of the things you could do, we talked about, you know, you mentioned like Park Arthur. We can go through the process, you know, don't, don't, I mean, keep the fire truck, order the fire truck, go through the process and look at, at the end of the year, we'll have an ID. Well, by July, or July, August, we're going to be starting this all up again. You're going to know what funds are available for capital that year. And you can do an authorization like you did this year with Park Arthur and have it be done, started early. You know, if we have the money. So, I mean, it accomplishes both things. It doesn't really change the timeline. And it gives you your, in the meantime, it keeps public safety going forward with the fire truck. I mean, they're ordering it for a reason. I mean, I'm not an expert, but.
Well, a few minutes ago, I thought I heard you say that we're waiting for another bid on that anyway. We never got more information and bids on the fire truck. And the PD is also costing us money every year, and it's been costing us money every year up until now.
Alderman Kabaki.
Again, it takes a year to build a truck like that, and I'll not sacrifice public safety for the, for the cause of tearing a building down, of which we have no idea what it's even going to cost us. That's a future, that's a future topic that we can talk about as a council, as a, as a committee, not, not in this budget. Thank you.
Well, we are talking about it now and we.
Anyone else? Want to add to this? All right, now Alderman Schrader.
And you did talk about this in 2020, and it really already was agreed upon to get this done. I don't understand why there's so much pushback on this. It's.
Just, especially the three Aldermen, yourself and Alderman Decker and Alderman Schwer. So things that come out of the committee hole are, they're no different than something that comes out of Public Works. It's a recommendation to the council. So if we say they actually voted to do this, well, they, there was a, read it. It says there's a consensus to demolish the office building and maintain the garage for cold storage. Staff will do necessary research. So I don't know whatever happened with that or what, but it never found its way to the council. It was never acted upon. And if you were to take this as the Bible, which you can't because it's just the committee of the whole, they said to leave this, the cold storage there anyway. So you still, I mean, it's not tearing down the whole building?
Okay. Well, is my motion on the floor? Are we still discussing it?
Oh, we need a second. Can we get a second on that?
I'll second it.
I would like to make a motion to.
You did. He's just clarifying. She, her motion, I mean, let me just state it quickly and if she disagrees. No, well, the motion, the motion, as I believe I heard it, was to not, to pull the capital, pull the fire truck out of the five-year capital, which would be next year, and take that, those funds and use it to tear it down the police department.
And add parking and potentially cold storage. I think we.
Okay. Are you, is your second agreeable to that? Sure. Okay, so now it's, I'm going to pan the floor, and I apologize. Getting tired.
Are we taking a roll call vote?
Well, I don't know. Any more discussion on this?
So cold, adding cold storage is part of your motion?
Yes.
All right, roll call vote.
Alderperson Wolf.
No.
Alderperson Hamel.
No.
Alderperson Decker.
Yes.
Alderperson Schwer.
No.
Alderperson Schrader. Yes. Alderperson Kabaki.
No.
And Alderperson Madden.
No.
Motion fails. Can, are we going to go through this line by line, or are we going to get a motion to approve it? And then you guys can amend and pull stuff out, or how do you want to do this?
Motion to prove the budget as presented.
Second.
Discussion on the motion to approve the five-year capital budget as presented.
You know my question.
Yep. All right, so we'll go, we'll start with that. So you want to, let me find my notes on that.
I just can't follow the, the whole details of everything.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So originally, when we talked about the Hillendale Road water extension, the discussions and budgets and every committee it went through was a four million dollar project. It was a two million dollar of using COVID funds of the 2.6 million that we had and two million of borrowing of what Scott was, Scott's proposal was. So when it came to the actual submissions for his budget, let me see if I can find it, his submission had on the top what it was, then had the two million dollars for funding source he had borrowing and did not have the funding source of the COVID funds that we were talking about. So it got submitted to finance that way, and I'm not assigning blame here, but somewhere there was a miscommunication, and I'm partially blamed because I should have caught it at some point too, that two million dollars of borrowing just disappeared somewhere. And we had the, so when it came to you guys, it had the two million dollars of COVID funds. It was a four million dollar project, and that remaining funds of where it was coming from was kind of like out in limbo.
And that was including Test Corners?
No, Test Corners was a separate item.
See, I thought it was presented to us, and Scott's not here, that we were able, we were going to get this money, we were going to use this money. That's why, that's why we decided to go with the project, to use this money to do Hillendale and Test Corners because it would only cost us this much money.
The extra.
And none of that evolved to be true.
The money above and beyond the two million dollars, because we had 2.6 something and change from COVID funds, was supposed to be used for Test Corners. So we, Sharon realized this when, after we had already awarded the bid for the contract that, okay, well, where's this extra money coming from? So I did come back to council on that and let you guys know that we were discontinuing the, or pushing off, or not discontinuing, we're just pushing off Test Corners because we already have the engineering done and the permits done on that. We're going to use partially, part of that and other fund balance, which I believe ended up being landfill funds. So looking at the.
And some of the money from the million dollars that we put on the road program.
I don't think.
For some reason, I.
I don't think the road program was used for it.
Three hundred and fifty thousand, I think even Scott said that, three hundred and fifty thousand.
So what I have here of actual, so the estimated cost on the project was four million dollars. The actual construction bid came in at 2.8, let's just say 2.9. Design and construction was about $237,000, 238 rounding up.
For like 3.1, 3.2?
The estimated remaining costs that we haven't, that we were estimating, because there's still work that's being done out there that we don't know, is about, he says 288, let's just say 300,000 on that rounding up. So the total project cost was about, we'll see, he's got 3.4 in here, let's say 3.5. So it actually came in about half a million dollars less than the four million dollars that was originally discussed and planned on.
I'm still confused because I thought it, I thought it included Test Corners in there.
The Test Corners was part of the COVID spending.
Yeah, so is, do we, are we using that COVID spending for this program?
We used all 2.6 of it towards this now.
Towards this?
Right.
Plus some more.
Plus some more fund balance, correct.
I have.
No, go ahead.
I have a question. How does two million dollars disappear?
A miscommunication between two departments.
By who?
I, I'm just going to say a miscommunication between two departments.
Well, I'd like to know how, who miscommunicated.
An answer we can give tonight.
And when did we know about this?
Shortly after it was, the bids were awarded.
So when was this?
Bids were awarded March 6th.
Like a year ago.
So a year ago, you knew about this?
Yes.
And why are we just, why am I just hearing about it now?
We brought it to council and I told you what we were doing.
You told me what? Told us what?
That we were not doing the Test Corners and using other funds for the balance of it.
What other funds?
Landfill, I believe.
Don't we, doesn't the council have to approve landfill?
You did, right, that's why I brought it forward.
I don't recall approving Hillendale or any roads out of the landfill? When did this happen?
You don't have that in front of me.
Well, I'd like all this information.
I think, I think this is confusing and it's going to take a long time, and we probably should do this in a closed session, a call closed session or something, so we can discuss this properly.
Yeah, we need all this information. I need, we need to know who made these.
I think that'd be, it'd be better than.
Who loses two million dollars?
That's, now that it came up like that, yeah, it's confusing for me even more, but.
And why, why am I just hearing this now?
Because I think, I think if we would have, if we would have just a council and it would have been presented to us, we could have said, hey, we have options or not. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I think we should discuss this behind closed doors and move on.
Alderman Decker, you?
Yeah, this is.
Oh, yeah, so if you want to talk about.
Bewildered.
Session, we'll do that.
So how do we proceed with getting all this information?
Were you saying something? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hillendale's not in the five-year capital, so.
I don't know.
It doesn't.
It's a, it's a separate subject.
Well, it's two million dollars. I'd like to know more.
Let's do this in a call, or is it, do a closed-door call? Or does that be a council?
We can just do a council call session, that's fine.
And then we can go through this and find out what's going on. That, that's my suggestion. If anybody wants to change it, go ahead.
No, that's fine. But going on to the five-year capital budget. We have a first. We don't have a second on this?
What's that?
We had a second?
Yeah.
We did not.
Because then she made a motion to amend and it was failed. Yes. All right, any other discussion or motion of the five-year capital plan as proposed?
Yeah, because you just mentioned it's a five-year, I'd like to take out that splash pad.
What year is it?
I can't find, I don't know. I was looking for it. It should be under Parks, right? I must have went right by it. I went through this thing twice. I thought I circled it. Do I have, no, I only have one. Rob, what are you looking for? Splash pad, splash pad, like eight hundred thousand dollars or something?
Yeah, that's about right.
Taj Mahal.
That's the basic, that's a basic model.
Twenty-six.
It's 2026.
Okay.
What is it?
It's in, it's in the 2026 projection.
It's a 2026 projection? Well, then, whatever. Okay. That's fine. You got it in the notes. You can leave it in there. I don't care. As long as you got it in the notes, we can go back and see what I said.
Any other discussion in the roll call vote?
Alderperson Wolf.
State what we're voting on, please.
The five-year capital plan as presented.
Yes, in favor, no, you're not in favor.
Alderperson Wolf.
Yes.
Alderperson Hamel.
Yes.
Alderperson Decker.
No.